Ladies and gentlemen, we are called to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, welcome, and tonight will be led in prayer by Commissioner Brad Turner, and then we have with us the Boy Scouts from Troop Number 317, and John Curtis, the son of our Mike Curtis, will be leading us in the pledge to the flag.
If I can just take the liberty just for a second, Commissioner Young informed me that this is National Peace Officers Memorial Day was on May 15th, and I've got a stat that I'd like to read really quick and just be able to share with the community exactly what sort of sacrifice our law enforcement officers make on our behalf. Since the first recorded police death in 1792, there have been over 19,000 law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. 1,570 law enforcement officers have given their lives in the last 10 years. 177 police officers were killed protecting us in 2011. On average, more than 56,000 law enforcement officers are assaulted each year, resulting in more than 16,000 injuries. If we could just take a quick moment of silence and those that have passed on protecting us. Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father Lord, thank you again for the opportunity that each one of us have been afforded to be here to represent the constituents that elected us. Lord, we've got some big issues that we have tonight, Lord. I just ask that you give each one of us a clarity of thought, Lord, for the discussions. Allow us to maintain an open mind without any agenda to do what's best for the citizens of Rutherford County. Ask that you be with these police officers, Lord, and the soldiers that protect us that are overseas, Lord, that are fighting for our freedom. Just be with them, Lord, protect them, be with their families, give them the strength that's necessary to sustain the deployments, Lord, and some of those situations that those families face that we might not be familiar with. Ask that you be with those families that are represented here this evening and those that are watching from home. We ask this in the name of your Son Jesus, amen.
Those in uniform, please salute, and all others right hand over heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Shorino.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion, Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the report.
Second by Mr. Jernigan. Did anyone have any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. We have four resolutions of recognition, so first, we're called on Commissioner Jeff Jordan to recognize our Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. Riverdale Girls and Coaches and Representatives, please come on up. I think this commission probably getting rather used to seeing many of you. We have one young lady that's not with us tonight, Alexa Middleton, just to spread out here, right over here if you'd like. She is honoring us tonight trying out for the 50 and under United States Olympic Team. She's in Denver, Colorado, which as far as I know is a first. I don't know that that's happened before, but at any rate, the matter of fact, her tryouts are as we speak. So I don't know how she's doing, but my cellphone goes off, I guess we'll know. This resolution honors, of course, the Riverdale Girls again, and I want to remind the Commissioners that this next week, we're going to have numerous athletes from at least six of our local high schools, including Riverdale, that are involved in some sort of team competition in the spring fling, and they'll be trying to get a state championship with which the Riverdale Girls, of course, have already done. The resolution reads as follows: Whereas for the third time in the last six years, the Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team has won the state title when they became the champions of the 2012 Class AAA TLSAA Girls Basketball State Tournament in March, with the entire starting five, the entire starting five, making the All-State Tournament Team. That happens about once every hundred years. Whereas the Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team won the championship when they defeated previously unbeaten Science Hill 70 to 55 in the championship game, and this victory followed a perfect district record of 10-0, district tournament wins over Smyrna and Oakland, region wins over Shelbyville. I'm going to stop right there. The Shelbyville score was 76 to 16. I'd just like to say it out loud. Franklin County and Lawrence County, a sectional win over Cumberland County, and state tournament wins over Mount Juliet, Memphis Overton, and as I said, Science Hill. Whereas this has been an exciting, hard fought and successful 34-3 season, and special commendation is due to all team members and to head coach John Wild and his staff for their dedication and commitment which made this championship possible, and for bringing this fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. And whereas the team members are, and I will do my best here, I'm pretty good at this, Shakobia Barbie, and we're going to talk about Shakobia a little bit more here in a minute, and she's a little nervous, so give her a break here, okay? Tori Watkins, Olivia Jones, Shelby Davenport, Maddie Cantrell, Rachel Connors, Jordan Greason, Taisha Petty, Alexa Middleton, Alexis Castleman, and Claire Chestnut. And whereas the coaching staff is head coach John Wild, and assistant coaches Holly White, Carrie Bishop, Emily Franks, and Chip Pinion, and just a word there that's not on here, you may remember us, Holly White being honored earlier in the year for one of the two outstanding assistant coaches and PE teachers in the state of Tennessee, only two were selected this year. Whereas the coaching staff is head coach, I read that, didn't I, and did a good job the first time. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2011-12 Riverdale Lady Warriors basketball team on your accomplishment by winning the 2012 Class AAA TLSAA Girls Basketball State Championship, and to coach John Wild and his staff for their dedication and commitment to these young ladies, resolve the 17th day of May 2012. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second by everyone else. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I think they're deserving of a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Barbie, you need to stay over here with me. Yes, you do.
Can I step in for a second?
Yes, sir. You want to speak right now?
Yes, sure.
This is head coach John Wild.
I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity, coming here and being awarded this proclamation tonight. I have a plaque that I'd like to present to Jeff and the county commissioners. It's a state championship plaque, 2011-2012, picture of the team, and a schedule down the side with all the players' names, but I appreciate you all having us here tonight, and it's quite an honor. Thank you.
We'll put that up in the mayor's office and deeply appreciate it. I have a longtime friend and fellow coach, and a real Riverdale fan, Riverdale teacher, with me somewhere in the audience, and I don't see him, but I know he's here. Where are you? Okay, come, Mr. Mayor, I need to make a, one of those, their motions that Mr. Malone be allowed to speak. I don't think it's going to be a problem. Right ahead. Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Malone is, as I said, a Riverdale teacher, a longtime friend of mine and coach, and I asked him to help me out tonight. He is the, well, PA man for everything Riverdale, really, mostly basketball, he knows these youngsters, but he also did some soccer the other night, and also a gospel singer of some note, and he and his twin brother, and did an excellent job. He got his start, and I'm going to tell this on him because this is, we've got some heavy issues tonight, I know we do, and it's not always fun being up here, it's really not, but this is one of the fun things that we get to do. And Mr. Malone got his start helping MTSU football, and of course, the first thing that he did, and Boots Donnelly was the coach, so that's how long ago it's been, and he got his start there on the PA system, which is, that's a pretty big venue, really, and of course, the first thing you do is that you have the National Anthem, and he, of course, was in the booth, and he said, "Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the National Anthem," and everybody got up, and the National Anthem rang out clearly. "Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee..." Wrong country. Boots Donnelly had something to say, but we won't go into that. I have a young lady here to my left that has won, as far as I know, if not this year, and she's a little embarrassed, as you can tell, just a little bit, every honor possible. I don't know of anything that's really left for her to win, so as a result of that, she's going to the University of Georgia, and Mr. Malone is going to tell you exactly what she has won, and Mr. Malone, I appreciate you coming tonight, thank you so much.
I would like to take this opportunity to extend gratitude and thanks to this special group of men and women, our Rutherford County Commission, along with an individual that have shown Riverdale High School and this county great support, the student athletes, our mayor, Mr. Ernest Burgess, we say thank you on behalf of Riverdale High School. To my great friend, Mr. Jeff Jordan, love is more than a four-letter word, and Jeff has shown love throughout the years of me knowing him and working with him, and so I'm grateful tonight to have this opportunity to be here with you. On behalf of the Riverdale Lady Warriors, we would like to say thanks for allowing us to be a part of this occasion. When you talk about women's basketball in high, at the high school level across the country, mid-state, state level, regionally, nationally, a name should be mentioned in that conversation, and that is Shakobia Barbie. One writer said, "Don't go seeking for honor, because honor will find you." Dr. Jonathan Davis, a former boxing corner man and cut man, said, "Humility is a sign of maturity and a characteristic of a true champion," and Shakobia Barbie has been placed in a category of her own. I believe she will go down in history as one of the greatest female athletes of all time in our county. Her four-year stellar cor, stellar career says it all. Four times All District 7 AAA, two-time District 7 AAA Player of the Year, three times All Region 4 AAA, two-time TWSSAA Class 3A Miss Basketball recipient, three times TWSSAA Class 3A All-State Performer, two times TWSSAA Class 3A Tournament MVP, three-time Tennessean Player of the Year, 2011 Gatorade Player of the Year, 2012 Pepsi Player of the Year, and three times the D&amp;J Female Athlete of the Year. This is just a short list of her accomplishments, but out of all of them, the greatest accomplishment was that, like the quote of the legendary Bill Russell stating, "The most important measure of how good a game I played was how much better I made my teammates play." She made everyone better, so tonight we salute Shakobia Barbie, as now, as we will have the opportunity to watch her on Saturdays, in her own words, she loved being a Lady Warrior, but she's excited about becoming a Georgia Bulldog. I would like to say a special thank you to her mother that is here tonight. You know what the word says, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he's old, he'll not depart from that." She has done an excellent job being a single mother. This young lady has defied all odds to be in a success, and she's a product. That success doesn't come to you, it comes from you. And tonight, on behalf of Riverdale High School, we say thank you, Shakobia. We say thank you for all the memories that we'll have when we mention Lady Warriors basketball. This young lady will be at the top of the list, and I want you to help us recognize this young lady as she's leaving Riverdale High School, going on to play ball at Georgia, becoming a Lady Bulldog, but when she go, we'll go with her. And I ask that you, if you don't mind, join me in telling her thank you for a four-year stellar career at Riverdale High School and being a part of Rutherford County athletics. Thank you, Shakobia.
Well done, sir. Well done. Congratulations. Thank you. Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, next, we're going to call on Commissioner Robert P., and he's going to have two resolutions of recognition, one on behalf of the Cripple Creek Cloggers, and one on behalf of International Folk Fest. Commissioner P.
Well, it's always tough to follow a radio announcer and a fine commissioner, too, but these two resolutions touch on me and as I was growing up, and a lot of other children and young adults in this county. The first one is a resolution of recognition for the Cripple Creek Cloggers and their 45th anniversary, and before I start this, any former or current members, please stand, so I want y'all to know who I'm talking about while we're talking about them. Anybody want to come up here? Mr. Lee would probably be willing to give us a little bit of a demonstration, but if y'all'd like to have a seat, that's fine, though. I'll go ahead and read this and maybe make another comment, but "Whereas the Cripple Creek Cloggers will celebrate their 45th anniversary this year, and whereas the Cripple Creek Cloggers began in 1967 as the 4-H Share the Fun Group at the Ketchum School, where founder Steve Kates was a teacher and 4-H leader. Whereas in 1969, the troop was open to countywide membership and assumed the name of Rutherford County Square Dancers. And whereas many young people from other middle Tennessee counties became involved as well, and in 1980, an adult troop called the Cripple Creek Cloggers was founded, which forms the basis of the group that's still performing today and since 2000, that is the only name that has been used. And whereas the Cripple Creek Cloggers continue to teach and rehearse each week, performing traditional Appalachian-style square dancing with a clogging step, the type of folk dance that is so closely associated with eastern middle Tennessee. And whereas the Cloggers perform at various events in the area as well as traveling to represent the United States and international folkloric festivals around the world, for which all funding for the travels is provided by the dancers themselves and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 17th day of May 2012, does hereby present this resolution of recognition to the Cripple Creek Cloggers, extending to them our sincere congratulations on their 45th anniversary and appreciation for their hard work and dedication and the fine publicity that they bring to Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to the Cripple Creek Cloggers by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move."
Second, Commissioner Jordan. All in favor, I'm sure, please say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations. I'd like to give these folks a hand, too.
Thank you. There's many of you I hadn't seen in a while, it's good to see you again. The second resolution of recognition is for the 30th anniversary of the International Folk Fest. Whereas the International Folk Fest will celebrate its 30th anniversary this year, and whereas the International Folk Fest was formed in 1982 as an outgrowth of the traveling that the Cripple Creek Cloggers were doing to represent the United States and international folkloric festivals in other countries. And whereas it remains an all voluntary event, and this year it will be held June 10th through the 17th, 2012, and will feature troops representing Puerto Rico, Belgium, Austria, Czech Republic, and Ireland. Whereas many volunteers donate countless hours and effort preparing for this yearly event, including arranging for the visiting troops' transportation, their food and lodging during their stay in Rutherford County. And whereas with dance groups from around the world, International Folk Fest promises to be a week of excitement and education as international groups perform for area schools, youth and senior citizen organizations, and civic groups here in the county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 17th day of May 2012, does hereby present this resolution of recognition to the International Folk Fest, extending to them our sincere congratulations on their 30th anniversary and appreciation for their hard work and dedication and the fine publicity they bring to Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to the International Folk Fest by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Cook, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Is Mr. Kates in the audience with us? Would you like to come up here and make a few comments? I'm sure you would.
I had asked him earlier, and he'd asked to sit down, but please come up.
Well, I can't talk, I'm a former student, Mr. Malone, I'm sure, so I shouldn't have waited to speak for me.
I thank you very much for the honor that you're bringing to the people that have contributed to these two organizations over these 45 years. These efforts involve thousands of people from this area, from Rutherford County. They have given of their time and effort and money, and they've supported all the work that we've, we started in 1967 at Ketchum School, where Robert P. was one of my early participants, but we appreciate you recognizing these efforts, and I thank you, not only for myself, but for all these other people, including many people who are here tonight who were members, and many who are here tonight who are still members, and many who are here who are working toward our Folk Fest, June the 10th through the 17th this year. So I hope you'll watch for our activities and attend some of the performances. In fact, the mayor is hosting us here on the square at 8:30 on Saturday, June the 16th, until 1 o'clock, and that should be a good event. Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Kates. Next, we'll recognize Commissioner Young to have a resolution regarding the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Honor Guard. Mr. Young.
I'd like to welcome the Murfreesboro Fire Department Honor Guard, have a resolution honoring them. Of course, I work at the fire department, but also live down the streets. These men and women I work with, they also protect me while I'm off duty, and I need all the help I can get, so. I have a resolution, whereas the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department took first place at the National Honor Guard Competition at the Fire Department Instructors Conference in Indianapolis, Indiana, on April 20th, 2012, and whereas the team participated in details such as full dress inspection, posting of colors, casket watch, and flag folding. And whereas the team members include Captain Jeff Irvin, Captain Gary Hutcheson, Captain Mike Adams, Captain Shift Inspector Thomas McAdoo, and Captain Shift Inspector Nora Smith, and Captain Shift Inspector Wade Williams, Driver Randy Shaw, firefighters Greg Burke and Charles Powell, whereas they competed against eight other departments from states ranging from Florida, Ohio, and received a trophy and honor as the National Honor Guard Champions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 17th day of May 2012, do hereby present this resolution of recognition to the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Honor Guard, extending them to our sincere congratulations and appreciation for their hard work and dedication. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of appreciation be forwarded to the Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue Department by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley and others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, we, the next on the agenda would be public comments, but we don't have quite enough time to start that, so we'll come back to that. Really, we're going to go down to public hearings. It's one or two minutes from 6:30, so we're going to start there, and then we'll come back to the normal part of the agenda. All right, so first on the public hearing agenda is a conditional use permit request, 12-A002, on behalf of Ms. Bankston, located at 4540 West Jefferson Road. The existing zoning is retail wholesale trade, and the requested conditional use permit is for a daycare center, and the size of that site is approximately 1.8 acres, and Mr. Demosey will give us further information.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. The first application that we have before you tonight is for a piece of property along Jefferson Pike, right near the State Route 840 interchange. The applicant is proposing to open a daycare for 30 children in the existing 1,100-square-foot building on the property. The center will have a total of eight employees, split between a morning and an afternoon shift. Hours of operation typically would be from about 6:15 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. There's a small gravel parking area that was established by a previous business. It's not adequate to serve a daycare of this size, so a minimum of eight spaces is required. That'll have to be built to county standards, and the site plan will have to be submitted for us to review. This property was rezoned retail and wholesale trade back in 1998, specifically for permitted use, I'm sorry, for permitted uses of merchandise sales and an antique store. In 2006, it was also, there was another application that was made for a floral business, and finally in 2008, there was an approval for a wellness center. However, none of these businesses really ever completely panned out, so now this application is before you tonight. There was not a lot of discussion about this particular item at the planning commission. We did have a few phone calls that were logged into the file, really just informational phone calls. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend unanimously to approve this application, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Commissioner Allen.
Doug, I can't recall why we decided to go with a conditional use permit on this property as opposed to a rezoning.
It's already zoned commercial. It's zoned, yeah, it's zoned retail wholesale trade already, so.
Then why are we giving it a conditional use? Because I thought we were getting, I thought we were doing away with conditional use permits.
Well, that's under the new system. This is an amendment to what was already on the property, so that's why.
I just want to make sure that we're being consistent, because I know this is going to come up.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, or Mr. Demosey? Okay, thank you, Mr. Demosey. That being said, we will declare the public hearing open with respect to this conditional use permit request, and if there are any here that wish to speak for or against this request, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments and statement. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Yes, I believe I see one lady coming.
I'm the one who applied for the conditional use permit. I am looking to open up a childcare center there. I've had a lot of parents come to me and say, "Hey, can I, we need a childcare center out there," and I said, "Yeah, I would love to." Ms. Jordan came up to me, and I approached her and I said, "Can I go ahead and start this?" And she said, "That would be great," and that's what we're trying to do, is fulfill the needs for the parents in Rutherford County.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bankston. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for or against this request? Okay, there's no one else wishing to speak. The public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion concerning this request? Commissioner Jordan.
I'd like a motion to approve contingent upon our staff comments.
Second by Commissioner Black. Other discussion? There being no other discussion, request it, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that was unanimous. Now we have a second request for rezoning and conditional use permit, 12-A003, on behalf of Keith Strain, located at 3646 Las Cassis Pike, and the existing zoning is R15, the requested zoning is Services, for a conditional use permit for a retail nursery on approximately two acres. Mr. Demosey.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. As you stated, this piece of property is located along Last Cassis Pike. Just put my notes in order here. The applicants for this project currently operate a retail nursery at forty-seven-ten Last Cassis Pike, which is about a mile and a half to the northeast of the subject site. They're proposing to build and operate a retail nursery on this property that's before us tonight, which would place their existing business. The company owns and operates a wholesale greenhouse facility and four retail garden centers within Tennessee. There's a copy of the concept plan on your table. It's the large sheet there on your table. It shows a proposed sales office, about fourteen hundred square feet, along with a couple of greenhouses, which would equal about three thousand square feet, and also a covered wood frame display area, which would be another three thousand, roughly three thousand square feet. Most of the outside storage with this business, besides the display area, would be located towards the rear of the property. Hours of operation would be for daylight hours, with spring being the busiest season. The property is currently vacant. There isn't existing barn on the property. The surrounding area is residential in character, with the closest commercial property, commercially zoned property, being a half mile to the southwest at the intersection of Last Cassis Pike and Compton Road. That being said, there's a neighboring property going back toward town about two over that is utilized as a chiropractic office. It was granted a conditional use back in two thousand and seven, however, it still remains residentially zoned. The county's comprehensive plan is neutral on this request. Last Cassis Pike is classified as what's called a suburban corridor, and commercial development is permitted along those corridors. However, the plan also discourages developments that create an isolated island within established development patterns. Staff has received a number of phone calls about this application, both before the planning commission and also between the planning commission meeting and this meeting tonight. We've also received petitions both for and against the development. On your tables, you should have a small handout with a couple of maps. Kind of looks like this. Just wanted just to kind of brief you on that. This is really for your reference and for informational purposes. We have received a few other calls and email, well, emails really, regarding to be added on to the petition, but they're not reflected on this because we had to do the map and print them out, so. But for the most part, what you see here is what was submitted to us, and we do have paper copies of that in the file, if anybody would like to see those. The first map focuses really on a one-mile and two-mile radius. The inner, I guess that's more of a pink circle, is one-mile radius, and the outer blue line is a two-mile radius from the property. The second map, on the second page, shows a wider area. Many of the petition, many of the names on the petition, especially those that supported the application, were outside of the two-mile radius, and you can see they're kind of scattered throughout the county, even in the, there's little blue dots you can see there, actually within the city limits of Murfreesboro. So again, this is really just for informational purposes, just to know that there were quite a few on both petitions, either both for and against this request. There was also quite a bit of discussion about this item at the planning commission. There was four different motions. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend denial of this application by a five to four vote, with also one abstention, abstention to the, to the vote. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions of clarification from Mr. Demosi, anyone? Commissioner Allen.
Doug, on this road, we talked about different classifications of roads, and so Last Cassis Pike is considered an arterial road?
Based on our long-range transportation plan, yes, ma'am.
What's the pavement width on this road?
The pavement width, as it's measured from the GIS, now this is from end of shoulder to end of shoulders, approximately a hundred, a hundred and thirty feet, and, I'm sorry, that's the right of way, excuse me, that's the right of way. The pavement width is about forty feet, and the actual travel lanes themselves, not counting the shoulders, is twenty-three feet, and the right of way is about a hundred and thirty feet.
And the speed limit on this road is?
It's fifty-five miles an hour in that area.
So this is not a small windy country road? This is a major road?
This is one of the main arterials into the city, yes, ma'am.
And they're talking about just simply relocating one mile down the road?
Roughly, mile and a half, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other questions, or Mr. Demosi? All right, Mr. Demosi, then we will have the public hearing stand by. But, all right, we'll now then declare the public hearing open with respect to this rezoning and conditional use permit request by Mr. Keith Strain. And again, we'll invite those that wish to speak for or against this motion to this request, to come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments. And we would like to give everybody their own due respect and be respectful of one another, and let's do this in a very, very civil manner.
The fatherly look. My name is Susie Trammell. I live at sixty-four fifty Hoover Road, Last Cassis, Last Cassis. I run Valley Growers Garden Center. I've pretty much known what I've wanted to do since I grew up, from the time I was little. Wanted, I pretty much know what I wanted to do when I grew up, from the time I was little, and it's exactly what I'm doing now. I grew up in Palma, Tennessee, on our family farm, where we have a greenhouse growing operation. And that was what my sister's cousin and I did after school and on weekends. This experience taught me a lot about work ethic, responsibility, and the value of a dollar. After high school, I came to MTSU and got my degree in plant and soil science. I met my husband, Jim Trammell, while in school. He was a school resource officer at Last Cassis Elementary School at the time. We were in Last Cassis attending a basketball game and saw a vacant garden center at forty-seven-ten Last Cassis Pike. We leased it in two thousand, and that's how Valley Growers got its start. My husband and I fell in love with the community and moved out there to start a family. We now have two children who will both attend Last Cassis this fall. Over the past twelve years, we have not only grown as a business, but also as a part of the Last Cassis community. We are a community business, and we are successful because of the Last Cassis community. We are the type of business who sells honey from a local beekeeper. We sell local art from local artists. We allow locals to set up, sell canned goods, baked goods, local produce. That's the type of business we are. We are successful, once again, because of the Last Cassis community. We have rented for the last twelve years. I love our current location, but it's time to find a permanent home, because this business is something my family wants to do for a very long time. We have two children, and I want them to have the same experience I had growing up. And for what it's worth, I want to build my dream garden center. Thirty-six forty-two Last Cassis Pike has been for sale for a long time. Seemed like a great location. There was already a business, Rutherford Back Institute beside it. I know it's conditional use, but bottom line is, it is a operating business. There's a great natural buffer around, on the other side. There's a double buffer to the back, and of course, Highway ninety-six runs to the front. It's not in the middle of Brandywood subdivision, it's actually a piece of the old Gober Farm. Considering I am located a mile and a half down the road at forty-seven-ten Last Cassis Pike, my garden center has never caused a traffic issue before. I can't imagine why it would at thirty-six forty-two Last Cassis Pike. We're actually close to the school zone near our current location. I agree, there's a lot of traffic on Highway ninety-six, but that's why it's a fifty-five mile per hour highway. Runoff noise, big trucks have been a complaint. Our engineer answered the questions at the planning commission about the runoff. I think he's here, so if there's any concerns, I think he could answer those questions. I don't consider my garden center a noisy place. In fact, I consider it quite the opposite, more of a peaceful place. I've never had a noise complaint before. Mulch is not a high priority at the moment. At my current location, it's not mine, it's who I lease from. If we decide to sell it, we will follow dust-free codes, contain it, whatever we need to do. I'm aware that most people here support our opposition, do not dislike Valley Growers. In fact, most shop with me. The issue is, they just don't want me in that spot. Some say move closer to town or in town. That's not the type of business we are. We're a local community business. I've worked for twelve years to develop the relationship in Last Cassis. It's very important me to stay in Last Cassis. Commissioner P. has given the opposition, asked them if I were to move at ninety-six in the Compton intersection, would they be opposed? There's only one problem, there's nothing for sale at the Compton ninety-six intersection. Forty-seven-ten Last Cassis Pike is not for sale. Thirty-six forty-two Last Cassis Pike is for sale and has been for a long time. Bottom line is, I'm a female entrepreneur who has worked hard to build a successful business, and now I'm trying to secure my business by purchasing thirty-six forty-two Last Cassis Pike and building my dream garden center. I can't promise or guarantee anything, none of us in here can, but I do feel my reputation of running a clean, family-friendly business over the past twelve years should speak for something.
We have to suspend rules, I mean, if we're going to do that, won't we, Mr.?
Yeah, at this point, well, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay, go right ahead then.
Chairman, you had asked, or you spoke of something about the mulch and stuff wasn't yours. What, on the side that you've got now, what there is not yours, and what is yours?
I leased the garden center, the mulch, we scooped for him, we have it worked out. He handles the purchasing, the taking care of that area. We have a straw trailer there. I know there were some issues from that. I do sell the straw, the straw trailer is not mine. It's Mr. Blankenship, so that, that wouldn't have to follow us to the new location. It's just something he had set up there.
There are some things there that's not going, would not follow you to that location.
Correct.
Thank you.
Wish to ask her anything? Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes, have you looked in to where you are right now about purchasing that? Is that, the owner does not want to sell?
All right, is there anything else of this young lady? All right, thank you very much. We will let the next speaker come forward. Give us your name and address and make your comments.
My name is Lonnie McMillan. I live at thirty-seven forty-three Ottawa Drive, which is back behind that site where our back property line is probably a hundred fifty, two hundred feet from there. I have a PowerPoint, but I'd like to make just a couple of comments before I do that. We put a petition on your table that we submitted Monday for the public record. There's a hundred and three signatures. All of those signatures are people that live right in that area. We had the opportunity to go out through this county. We have people here that belong to civic clubs, car clubs, and we could have got three or four hundred signatures ourselves. These are people that are going to lay their head on the pillow right there, close to their property. It will affect us. So their dream does not end. If they don't get this piece of property, they can do like any other business, go down the road and find a piece of commercial property. Can you do that? We submitted this, part of us just to kind of answer the presentation that was done at the planning commission. They made the comments that they're in a neighborhood. We just want to draw the distinction between our neighborhood and what they call a neighborhood. I also went out and took some pictures of some other nurseries. I would want to clarify one of the comments. It says there's varying standards for nurseries, and although I know that the county has consistent standards, but what we're trying to show is, they're minimum standards. There's nothing that binds Valley Growers if times get hard or if they have issues to keep the standards that they've kept. All they have to do is meet the minimum standards, and you'll see. You want to go ahead and run into the pictures there? This is their location at Last Cassis, and we all agree, it's a nice nursery, it's well Just continue on how this talk as you go. That's another picture. We do show the mulch here, because they do sell much here, mulch. It may not be theirs, but they sell it. They have on their site plan a plan for mulch if they move in our neighborhood. And you'll see, there's not very high standards at all for selling mulch. You'll just keep rolling. I believe this is the co-op, their location. Once again, it's a nice place. This is out on Church Street. I don't know if anybody wants to wake up and see this right next door to them like Joe Powell will. This is the same place on Church Street. This is out at Walter Hill. If you go down there and look at the property they're at, they said they're in a neighborhood. Behind them is the river, and there's a good bit of pasture land. You have to drive four tenths of a mile to get to the nearest house on their side of the road. She made a comment about when they moved in there, there was somebody living in the house next door to it, but now it's a commercial development. That's our exact concern, because we've got a lot right next to where they don't want to go that could very easily go commercial. We don't want that. This is just a shot standing in front of their place. That's a property right across the highway. A house across the highway from them. That's the house that's four tenths of a mile from them, sits two to three hundred feet off the highway. This is the blue house that's gotten so famous in this conversation here. That, I'd like, if you don't mind, just stop back there. That is a chiropractor's office, but it looks a whole lot like a house, and can very easily remove the sign and get, move the coke machine, and it's a house again. Real easy. This is a house right across the highway. I believe that's Miss Gilwick, I think. Another house across the highway. Same thing there. This is the little house right next to them. I don't think they're opposing this. This, if you'll stop here, this is a very nice place. He's got about a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of property line that's right adjacent to where they're going to be. Now, they talk about buffer trees, but any of you that's seen a storm blow through here knows those would go in a heartbeat, just drive down Thompson. And look at the people battered around, see what their buffer tree looks like now. This is the Hickersons. This is the McDonald's, I believe. And that's a house, three or four houses down. Same thing, that's the entry to Brandywood, and she's technically correct, that property is not part of the Brandywood subdivision, but you can take one step from their property and be in the Brandywood subdivision. This is the back view. These are the houses, families that will be right adjacent to their properties. Same thing here, just more houses that will be right up against their property. And as far as traffic, in the mornings, the traffic backs up generally past Brandywood subdivision, up on top of the hill. But quite frankly, that's the easy part of the day, because most people will let you in if you're trying to get out of Brandywood. The tough part is when they're coming home, three to five, six o'clock in the evening, and you're trying to get out. Or many times, and I know many of these people from Brandywood can attest to this, you pull out, can't see anybody coming over that hill. Time you get down to about where their property is, there's a slight bend there. You look up, somebody's right on your rear end. So I ask, where do you go? Now, we can just pull over on the shoulder. But you put this in there, and there's someone just got flowers, pickup, full of trailer, where do we go then? Somebody's on your rear end, sixty, sixty-five, because they don't all drive fifty-five. These are just some pictures as it starts to back up, which you can see, if you'll stop right there, there's a slight bend there in that highway, and that's where their drive will be. I assure you, I just promise you, I sell trucks, I'm not a traffic guy. I can promise you, there's going to be some accidents there. This is a car at the Brandywood subdivision trying to get out in the morning. Like I said, that's pretty easy right there. People will generally let you in, but it normally backs up over that hill. So that's the gist of our conversation as far as this. I would just like to say, this is also not some liberty property rights issue. These people bought this land, according to Ms. Elizabeth, it was zoned residential, I think, in eighty-four. According to Ms. Elizabeth, it was zoned residential, I think, in '84. So they bought it as residential property with no promises that it would go commercial at some point in time. I just urge you to please vote against this.
All right, thank you, sir. Please come forward whoever would like to speak next.
My name is Linda McMillan. I live at 3743 Idlewood Drive in the Brandywood subdivision. I'm opposed to this being rezoned as a commercial property coming into our neighborhood. I agree the traffic issues. I just see that as we're going to have more traffic if it's there and create more issues with people that are pulling in and out of there. And we just perceive that being a problem.
Thank you. Next, come forward, please.
Mayor, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity that we can come and speak as citizens in a forum like this. I was attracted to...
Give us your name and address, please, sir.
I'm sorry. My name is B.J. Wall. I live at 3629 Idlewood Drive. This proposed property backs right up to the backyard of several of us who live along Idlewood Drive. I'm certainly very much opposed to this for a number of reasons. We live in a nice quiet area and I was attracted to this area several years ago when I was offered a position by MTSU to develop their manufacturing engineering technology program. So about 30 years ago, I looked all around and I found this nice quiet subdivision that we built a house in. We've been there for about 30 years. And I'm certainly opposed to any commercialization of something in our back door. We think of things like odor, chemicals runoff, so forth. A lot, a lot of things in that area. But also we think about setting a precedence for commercialization. I know enough about the law to know that precedence is very powerful. And we certainly don't want to get started in that direction. Some of the people have mentioned the traffic problem. Having driven back and forth to MTSU for many, many years, I can assure you what the previous gentleman was saying is real. I sat there at that outlet into '96 for many, many minutes sometimes when traffic was backed up past the gate where we tried to get out. And so that's very real. And I think with some type of commercial establishment there, this would certainly get worse. It certainly couldn't get any better. So it would be my hope that the commission would give those of us that are directly impacted by this thing. I was one of those that got a letter saying you will be impacted by this thing. I would hope that you would give us more consideration than those who may be against it, but who are not directly impacted by it. So I thank you very much.
Sir, next, please come forward and give us your name and address.
I'm Jean Lee. I live at 2103 Fox Hill Drive in Brandywood subdivision. I'm here in hopes that you will think about what you're doing now as far as deciding on a vote for or against. But I hope that you will vote against zoning this area commercial. It's right between two houses, as the gentleman said, while ago. And I think there's so much commercial business here and there, all over Murfreesboro now. When we came here 17 years ago, it was a lovely small town. It's still a wonderful town with wonderful people. But I think we need to start really thinking about our residential areas and how important it is to have trees that grow, have quiet places that people can live and raise their children and not be surrounded by 7-Elevens or Valley growers or anything. We have no, nothing really against Valley growers per se. It's a lovely place. And I like the people that own it. But I think that it should not be stuck in the middle of a residential area. So please consider that request. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next speaker may come forward and give us your name and address.
My name is Shirley Wall and I live at 3629 Idlewood Drive. I have lived there for 28 years. Bill came to teach at MTSU in 1980 and we bought the land soon after that. And we built our home in 1984. It's a quiet area, a peaceful area. And I just ask you to think long and hard before you vote to pass this and make it commercial. Because if you can do it to our neighborhood, there's no neighborhood that's safe in Rutherford County. So you've been elected to do a job and we're just asking to give us consideration and think long and hard. And I'd like to say, those that I contacted by phone, you were very helpful. One gentleman explained to me in detail how this would take place. And I thank you for your time, for your courteous response to our phone calls. And we just ask that you vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, my name is Perry Ogletree and I live at 3711 Idlewood. I'm one of the adjacent homeowners to the property in question. In fact, they'll be about 130 feet approximately of common lot line with their lot. I do not want this to happen. First of all, I realize that the existing conditional use permit was for a professional office. It was not for a retail sales site like we will be having with this nursery. There are a lot of other conditional things that both property owners, the adjacent professional office, as well as the other homeowner that shares on the common property on this Cassis pipe, both have said that if this conditional permit is granted, that they will move forward to get their property granted as commercial as well. Therefore, we will have encroached and started a commercial development in the middle of our subdivision. And even though this is not zoned or is not deeded as part of the subdivision, it is by virtue of the common lot lines and everything else in the character of the existing structures that are there. So I ask you that you do not approve this rezoning and please deny it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker may come forward.
My name is Deborah Golden. I live at 3749 Shady Lane. Our property backs up to the Brandywood subdivision. We don't live in the Brandywood subdivision, but our property does back up to it. My family has been in that community since the 30s. My grandfathers and great grandfathers had farmland there. I have great uncles that used to race cars where the Brandywood subdivision now is. So I'm just wondering if, when Brandywood was not there, if the people in the community took the approach to not accept change and to move forward with the people that are living there, not had that opportunity. Change is not always bad. These are people that are in the community. They're good people. They show that they can be a successful company. They want a future there. And it is not in the middle of a residential subdivision. It has road footage on Highway 96. I hope that you consider this and approve it and let this company move forward and stay in this community as a successful company.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Gerald Golden. I live at 3749 Shady Lane that borders Brandywood subdivision also. I've lived there for 27 years. I've bought several houses in the past 69 years and making large investment. I've considered the home and the location and the future of the home and property. I think that a state or federal highways are a potential commercial area. I find no surprise to see commercial businesses springing up on Highway 96 as we can see by driving on it now. I can't see a piece of property residential when a 24-foot highway with cars and trucks running down at 60 miles an hour and your front yard is residential. The intent did business will probably cause no more noise or traffic than there is there already. I can't imagine a person so naive to own a property on a US highway or state highway to think that a business is not going to come into the community nor is it in the near future. Thank you.
Next, please come forward.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Scarlett Davis. I live at 1029 McBride Branch Road. I'm also an employee of Ms. Susan Trammell. I have worked for and with her family for the past eight years. In that time, I have seen her give continuously back to the community, to every church, to every school, to every soccer team, to every football person from Siegel to Oakland to Last Cassis, to every ham breakfast, to every church, no matter what denomination it's been. And she gladly does it and gives of herself. And this is the type of person that she is to her employees and to anyone who reaches out to her whatsoever. I would like to see this business continue. My livelihood and a great many other people's livelihoods depends on this family business. And it means a great deal to me and a great deal to the people involved. There are a lot of things going on on Last Cassis Highway. I think that we've all noticed the expansion outward. I also know that if you look at some of the documents, as I have, you may pull them up on the internet, that there is a road proposal that's going to run from Joby Jackson Highway all the way across to Last Cassis Highway. And it's proposed that it should be a four-lane highway. I would like for everyone to think about this because this is truly going to make it go commercial and it's going to look more like 231 South. So I'm thinking, I would rather have a garden center that is going to inculcate this area, make it a green area, help to preserve this area and protect Brandywood in a way that a 7-Eleven is not going to do or a Wendy's is not going to do or a corporate business is not going to help us in this area. My grandparents are from there. All my relatives on my mother's side live up and down Last Cassis Highway. I care about this community. I care about the water and it means a great deal to me. So I would like to ask you to please vote yes on this zoning. Thank you very much.
Right. Others that wish to speak, please come forward.
My name is Bruce Hickerson. Excuse my voice. I live at 3722 Last Cassis Pike. And along with the others that have spoken tonight, I am very much opposed to the garden center moving at the locations they have requested. There are many reasons for that. First of all, you drive out the Pike there and you see a bunch of homes that people are proud of. They've got nice front yards and hope to be able to maintain that. Valley growers would be interested in profit without a doubt and I would hope that they would make a profit. But on the same hand, while they're in there to make a profit, the operation of their business would deteriorate, would cause our property values to go down. This seems, well, this way it should be. Another thing is they've talked about the traffic problem. Being right there on the highway and in the middle of it, it's a good ways down from my house to Compton Road. And I'm only 300 feet from the entrance to where they were talking about. And about traffic of morning from 6:00 to 8:00 especially backs up past the entrance to the subdivision and on over the hill in a lot of cases. And there have been a number of accidents there. And if you check your records, you would see that that section in there is rather dangerous. Excuse me. But anyway, we have a very nice neighborhood and would like to keep it that way. And I know that Valley growers would not do anything intentionally to harm the neighborhood, but it would deter the looks of the property much to have a business stuck in the middle of a subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. I very often travel 96 going out to Milton and it's usually about 8:30 in the morning. I have done that trip about 8:00 o'clock and I decided I would never do it at 8:00 o'clock again. At 8:30, there's virtually no traffic. I don't know what the specifications of the hours of operation of this new location for Valley growers are, but I would submit that if it's 8:30 or later starting, there would be no problem with traffic currently. One of the problems of our blanket R-15 zoning across the county is that subdivisions go in all over. There will be traffic, there will be more traffic from every corner of the county coming into Murfreesboro. Probably most of Valley growers' clients and customers are from Murfreesboro. They'll be going out at, in the morning. Whereas Bandywood or Brandywood, I couldn't catch which the pronunciation was, their exit from their subdivision is beyond Valley, this new location. So that shouldn't be a problem. Now, I don't know what happens in the afternoon out there because that's not when I travel. But 96 is a highway, a state highway. And I think you should consider that more retail will be going in through the next years along that highway and it is a suitable use. Thank you.
Hey, please come forward those that wish to speak.
Tally Fair, I live at 3835 Last Cassis Highway. I'm for this, for its traffic. You've got a long straightaway on either side of this property coming, going into Murfreesboro, coming from Murfreesboro. I don't think you're going to create a problem there. Where they are located now, frankly, is probably more unsafe in this location where they're proposing. I'm just a taxpayer. I live out there. It's not going to affect me one way or the other. But I think more emphasis should be put on small business and help them. Help them get started. They're going to create jobs. They're going to create taxes and they'll help the community. They're the backbone of our nation. I'd appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Bill Taylor, and I live at 2103 Tanglewood Court in the Brandywood subdivision, which is a part of the Las Cassas community. My wife and I are both opposed to the approving of this rezoning of the property at 3642 Las Cassas Pike. We have several reasons for this opposition. This is one of the nicest neighborhoods in this area, and when I talk to some of you Commissioners, you were not familiar with it, and I suggested that you go out and drive through and just take a look at the area. It's a nice enough area for a country music star to move in. It's a nice enough area for a doctor to move into. It is an established neighborhood with well-manicured lawns, shrubs, flowers, and et cetera. Even the entranceway is landscaped. Most of the residents are mature adults. There are very few children there. Of the 103 who signed our petition, 44 are retired. Eight of these retirees live directly behind the property in question. The Trammels mentioned building a legacy for their children. I would say most of the retirees' homes are legacies to leave to their children. Please take into consideration the petition we presented are all from our neighborhood. There's not a single one that's outside of our neighborhood. Although I haven't seen it, I am told the Trammels' petition has signatures from a wide area, many miles from our neighborhood. So they really don't really care. They just signed the petition. The Trammels are also trying to buy a commercial property at residential prices. I can back that up. I have a vacant lot, and what I would ask for the vacant lot, if you would triple that, it would be about what they are trying to buy, two acres. My lot is three-quarters of an acre, and this would be a sweet deal for them. It really would. Adjacent property owners have already said they will go commercial too. Would you want to ruin a good neighborhood this way? You could have a tobacco and beer store, and they're popping up all over the county. You could also have fast food restaurants. You could go on from there with most any other kind of business that you can think of. The added traffic should certainly require a turn lane. I'm told that there are 7,700 vehicles that pass by each day, and I travel the road quite a bit. If you're driving 55 miles an hour, you're holding traffic up behind you for quite some way. I have a couple of old cars, and I can't even drive them on the highway because I get run over if I do. The traffic there is not good. At this time, we have trouble getting out of our subdivision, and several have had accidents in this area. There are two ladies who have been severely injured in accidents in this area, and one of them still has not recovered, and this has been some three or four years ago. Have you ever smelled fresh mulch? Consider the noise of a bobcat running all day loading mulch onto trucks and trailers. My wife and I were in Old Time Pottery about 10 days ago, and we came out the front door after we'd made our purchases and looked to the rear of Old Time Pottery. There was a tractor trailer unloading mulch, and we could smell it all the way from the back of Old Time Pottery, and that's probably the distance of at least three football fields. It smells. For these and other reasons, we respectfully request that you deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Margaret Eaton. I live at 3675 Las Cassas Pike. I'm a newcomer. I moved at the back of my mother's property, who's going to be directly across from the nursery. She's at 3655, and I do know her opinion on this issue. The traffic in the morning is bad, and there have been wrecks out there because it's 55 miles per hour. And the gentleman before me talked about being unable to drive on the highway with his old car because he would be run over, and that's very real. The other issue is, I wanted my children to have the legacy. Believe it or not, I was retired in 2009, and I got bored, so I went back to work. But I just think it's going to be, it will ruin the neighborhood, and it's not that I have one thing against the young lady. You know, I admire the entrepreneur that's making themselves into something. I think that's great, and I have no issue with your facility. It's very clean. It's very nice. I applaud your efforts. But by the same token, I would not have built a house and certainly not paid what I paid for it if I thought I was going to be in a commercial area. I'd have just slapped up a trailer and called it a day. So, you know, I ask you to please vote against this. I appreciate it. Thanks.
I live at 2116 Tanglewood Court in Brandywood subdivision. I stand before you this evening opposing the current rezoning request for the property located at 3642 Las Cassas Pike. My husband and I moved to our subdivision a little over 10 years ago because of the seclusion the neighborhood provided. I am a lifelong resident of Rutherford County and can certainly attest to how the county has grown throughout the years, but it is my belief that placing a retail nursery outside our subdivision is an infringement upon the residential feel that our area provides. The property in question is surrounded on all sides by residential property, and we are confident the applicant can find a more suitable location, one that places them in the midst of other commercial development. I could list a host of reasons why we oppose this rezoning request, many of which you've already heard this evening, including added traffic, noise, lighting, further commercialization, et cetera. But for my family, the fact is, we are in an exclusive residential area which provides no benefit to commercial development. In 2007, the rezoning request for neighboring property to be rezoned commercial was denied. I question what has changed in our area to allow passage of this request for valley growers in 2012. Sadly, your voice tonight could affect the entire landscape of our area as surrounding property owners have indicated that they will follow suit to have their property rezoned as well, should the property in question be rezoned to commercial. Many of the neighbors in this area have chosen their property to be their lifetime residence, myself included. I simply ask for you to help us keep it that way. Throughout this process, we have heard that valley growers wish to be good neighbors. Good neighbors don't push their agendas with a host of incomplete facts and continue to do so where they aren't wanted. Good neighbors are forthcoming with 100% of the facts and work for the betterment of those around them. I'm sure you saw the D N J article that was published on May 6 regarding valley growers' expansion plans. Obviously, the article was written to shed positive light on their pursuit to better their business, but at whose expense? The article was published several days after valley growers held a community meeting at Brown's Market in Las Cassas. The unfavorable results of that meeting were conveniently omitted, leading the average reader to believe there was little opposition. It was also mentioned that valley growers were anticipating good news since there is a chiropractic office next door, leading readers to assume the neighboring property was already zoned commercial when in fact, the chiropractic office is operating under a conditional use permit in a residential area. It is also on record that valley growers signed a new lease agreement with their current landlord just a few months ago in January 2012, extending their current lease through January 2015. However, they certainly didn't allude to that when it indicated in the article that they could be asked to vacate their leased property at any moment. What about telling surrounding property owners during the committee, a community meeting held on May 3rd that it didn't matter what we, as neighbors, had to say about the rezoning request, that it would be up to the commission? Does that show us that valley growers wish to be good neighbors? In closing, I would ask you, would you want a nursery or any other commercial business in your own backyard? The overwhelming consensus among the surrounding property owners in attendance at the community meeting held by valley growers on May 3rd was no, and there are over 100 signatures on a petition in opposition to this rezoning request from surrounding property owners, not those that live in Maine, Milton, or who knows where else, signatures from those that live adjacent to the proposed property. I feel the residents have spoken, and I want to personally thank each of you for your representation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Joe Powell. I live at 3712 Las Cassas Pike. I live next door. My patio faces this property. I'm going to hear, hey, bring me another bag of manure, all day long. I enjoy sitting out on my patio, but I won't with this proposed business moving in. This is a quiet neighborhood. You might hear of a dog bark, but that's about it, somebody cutting their yard with a lawnmower. Another problem is the creek, that dry creek that runs through my property that feeds my little pond out front is rain-fed. The water from Brandywood comes down through and runs under 96 on down Stones River. All of the rain that runs off of this property in question runs right across my property, left side of the creek, into the creek, into the pond. The proposed plan that they have shows that they will have mulch there. That mulch is going to be right where the water runs off on my property, and so I'm going to get that, plus the smell, the noise. I'd just appreciate it if you turned this down. We don't want it in our community. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I also live at 3712 Las Cassas Pike. We are 150 feet, I believe, if my review of the plans is correct, adjacent neighbors to the north for this property in question. We've lived there for 18 years. We are, in Murfreesboro terms, newcomers to Murfreesboro. I am currently employed. I am not part of the 44 lucky people who are currently retired, but when I sit out on my patio in the back, it's nice not to look at anything that's commercial. We'd like to keep it that way. My quality of life is something that's very important to me, and I hope you'll consider that, and my neighbors, those who've spoken, and those who aren't here tonight, who aren't able to be here tonight. And I also appreciate the fact that the residential designation of the houses in the area, although we may be naive to live on 96 and expect it to stay residential, it is currently residential, and we'd like, if you would so move, to keep that at least for some period of time in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello all, I'm Lisa M. Finger. I live at 3735 Idlewood Drive. We received one of the letters, that it was a direct impact letter. Our road backs up to 96 East. I was looking back through my checkbook the other day, and I have a check dated August of 2000 where I bought from valley growers. So we have dealt with them a lot over the years, and we love their business. However, we just believe that this spot where they want to be is just not appropriate for them. It's like spot rezoning. We want it to remain residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that wish to speak? Please come forward.
I live at 2103 Fox Hill Drive. That house also faces Idlewood, so we're very close to this particular property. An Internet search for the term "spot zoning" reveals the following definition. "Spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel of land within a larger zoned area. When the rezoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restrictions, the rezoning may be for the benefit of a particular owner and at odds with pre-existing adjacent property owners. The standard State Zoning Enabling Act states that all such regulations shall be uniform for each class or kind of building throughout each district. Courts may rule certain instances of spot zoning as illegal. This is spot zoning, and will have a deleterious effect on all the affected property owners in and near Brandywood subdivision. There is no contiguous commercial property adjacent to this parcel. It leapfrogs by half a mile from the corner of Compton Road and 96 over numerous residences. The non-contiguous Starkey property has a conditional use exemption to operate a small business from its residence. My understanding is that if Dr. Starkey should sell that property, the limited use permit dies, and the property reverts to residential zoning. I urge the commission to reject this application for rezoning on Las Cassas."
Anyone else that wishes to speak? Please come forward.
Hi there, I'm Carolyn Hickerson, and I live at 3722 Las Cassas Road. Bruce and I have been living there for 23 years now, and of the 12 years that valley growers have been out in Las Cassas, I have purchased items there. As a matter of fact, yesterday I was there, spent about $135. I really have counted on them to really be my, I guess you might say, my advisors on what works best and the items I need to buy. And so I really and truly have cherished the help, especially from Scarlett. She has become one of my favorite little gals out there, and really, I love Valley Grower Girls. It's convenient for us. I love going there, but I do have some concerns. Bruce and I are just about three driveways down from where the folks would like to move, and I do know that they're open a half a day on Sunday afternoon. That I really don't care for. The other thing is, yes, the doctor is next door, but I would say that it had to be an emergency for him to operate on Sunday afternoon. That is my assumption. Okay, now then, the other thing that, I'm a retired banker, and I really look at the whole picture of anything, talking with the grandchildren, planning things, and as all of them have moved into teenagers and going to the universities and all, and I'm forever saying, let's look at the whole picture. Bruce kids me about that, but that's one thing that I was thinking of in the valley growers' respect, because when you purchase a new piece of property like this, you really may not find out and look at the whole picture of what all may come your way. It's going to be at your expense to get established in a new area, a new location, even though you're down the road. Here's the other thing, too. I could tell you many stories about living on Las Cassas Road. I could really write a book. All the traffic they've spoke about is absolutely true. The Powells have a brick entrance. Bruce and I have a brick entrance. Our entrances have been hit and demolished and had to be rebuilt. One time, the county had to rebuild ours. One of their graders hit our brick entrance. He was way out of his line of his duty there. And the other thing is, too, with the highway, it's actually a racetrack. From the kids, when they leave Oakland High School, wham, well, right where we live, that's a good avenue. Let's beat that guy over the hill. I have seen workhorses to absolutely almost run me off of the road. One day, I had my blinker on, started about way back before the doctor's house, and I'm going to turn into my gonna turn into my driveway, which is a right-hand turn. I saw these kids coming, and I thought, boy, watch my blinker, watch my blinker. And you know what? I saw he wasn't slowing down, and man, I wheeled in that driveway. That was a task. I was driving only a conti- car in those days. Anyway, no kidding, he started setting on that brake, he couldn't do it, and he slid down. He came down, and we have a concrete ditch in front of our house, and he was setting catty-cornered, and man, was he turning that wheel trying to get out that, and he couldn't move. He couldn't move. One wheel was free-wheeling. I'd just parked, and I came out just shaking my head like, don't do it. Well, he got out, and he was very embarrassed. But anyway, I said, hey, let's go in and call your mom and dad for help. What you say? Listen, that boy didn't want to, but he never ended up in my ditch again either. And I have had other things out there that I could write stories about. But anyway, it is a racetrack that way, and I do have a giant concern of anyone turning out of Valley growers. If they're turning into Valley growers, they can get rear-ended right there and end up in a ditch, too. Or if they're trying to turn out and go toward Murfreesboro, you know what? Any of the traffic coming out of Brandywood is really in trouble. Two of my very dear neighbors and friends that are in the audience tonight have been in serious wrecks right there at that intersection of Brandywood. It is not fair, because you run out of the, you have planned to get out at you think is a safe time. Whoever's coming across that hill, you better step on it when you get out of there, because they're gonna be right on your back. Well, okay, looking at the whole picture, okay? There's a simple little scenario that I'd like to take as a truth. Reading stories to our seven grandchildren, there was a storybook by the name of The Country Mouse and the City Mouse, okay? They each had visited each other, and they wanted to see how the other one lived. It looked enticing. So, okay, they swapped places for a little while. The long story end is the fact that they decided, they believed they wanted to go back where they were, because that's where they most belong. I'm afraid that, you know, the Valley growers might actually find out it's not always greener on the other side of the bridge. We are actually zoned Murfreesboro. They are Last Cassis. And I do hope that they do find a better suited spot for their business, but just please not in my neighborhood.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Jason Harper. I live at 2116 Tanglewood Court in Brandywood. I want to address this a little differently. My time, I want to spend about the way that this was approached in the beginning. If you look at the way Mr. Keith Strain requested the application, he signed off on the application. In answer to the question about were adjoining properties and owners notified by mail, he said yes, followed by the number of letters sent, 10 plus or minus. Now, of those 10 letters, in his words, he stated that some of them were mailed to addresses in Florida, and some were mailed without stamps and sent back to sender. At the May 3rd committee, the May 3rd committee meeting that he asked, or the community meeting, he asked, he was asked about those letters, and he said that the mistake was made by his office staff. And Mr. Strain, done in his due diligence, he would have informed Valley growers that property owned by Dr. Starkey was not zoned commercial, but instead was a special use waiver with many regulations for compliance, such as a certain number of vehicles in and out per day. My feeling is that armed with that kind of knowledge, Valley growers would have said, maybe this is not the best idea for us to invest our money before we have a zoning change. Instead, I think that Mr. Strain encouraged their plans, saying that there's not gonna be much opposition there. Boy, was I wrong. Those are the first words he said in the community meeting. He realized then that there had been a lot of opposition. 70-plus people had signed a petition against this. At the meeting, no one was there from the D and J to report about it, and so on May 6th, there was a real flattering, flattering article written on their behalf. There was an email exchange I've seen, I'm not sure if this is appropriate or not, but it's Mr. Strain asking a question of Ms. Emsley about how he thinks that people are gonna vote tonight. He says, we're gonna win this by two votes from what I hear. What do you think? Come on, tell me, this is fun. I won't hold you to it. He was sending an email saying that was inappropriate contact on his behalf, and he apologized. I would say to Mr. Strain that this is not fun. It's not fun to the community members who live there. It's not fun to the Trammels. They've invested money in the belief that everything he said is gonna come true. What's at stake is a peaceful neighborhood. I know when I was younger, I made mistakes at school, and my father supported me when he knew, and I could prove that I'd worked hard and made the mistakes not due to a lack of effort. I know my coaches in high school and college rewarded me for efforts and punished me for laziness. And now, as an adult, my employer has high expectations for me every day. If I don't show up to work, I don't get paid. In my opinion, it seems to me that Mr. Strain failed to show up to work on the beginning of this process, and instead tried to show up at the end of the process, and he put the cart before the horse. Now, it seems to me he wants the county commission to do his job for him. He wants you to vote based on a dream of one family. And while that's a great dream, and I wish them the best, I ask that you vote instead in favor of the majority of people in attendance tonight who see a vote in favor of their proposal as a vote against that which has made Rutherford County the great place that it is, a place of honesty, integrity, and civic pride. I ask you'll please vote against this proposal.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
My property's at 3614 Last Cassis Pike and 3624 Last Cassis Pike. It's the chiropractor and the house right next to it. I'm completely against this. I think it's selfish on their part to want to put their place in the middle of our homes. I came all the way up from Florida to raise my family, to have the whole country beautiful experience for my kids, and now I gotta worry about a garden, garden place next to me, or, you know, Ace Hardware, whatever you wanna call it, pretty much squashes that dream for me, and I know it squashes it for everybody else who's worked hard on their homes and land, and I think it's pretty selfish. And I can't believe we're actually even debating this. It shouldn't even be something we should be doing. They can go right down the road where it's zoned commercial and make everybody happy, and it won't impose or hurt anybody else. This is people's homes. People invest everything into their homes, and it's wrong that we're even doing this. We need to please consider this, the people who have their homes around here, please consider, and know that if this was one of your homes, you would not want a busy business being next door to it. It imposes a danger to my children, too. I got two small children, I gotta worry about traffic, heavy flow traffic in that parking lot coming in and out, you know? It's sad. And I want it to remain residential and keep the beautiful landscape that's out there for everybody. And thank you.
The commissioner has a question for you, if you would just wait just a moment. Did you ask, I want to ask her a question?
Yes, sir. Did I hear you correctly? You, your husband is the chiropractor? Okay. Some of those same concerns that you just stated when you all came and asked for the chiropractor, I was on the planning commission at that time, when y'all came and asked for the rezoning and the condition use permit, those same concerns that you just addressed, did you not think of those concerns when y'all asked for it at that time?
Well, I wasn't there at that time. I was actually in Florida. My husband was the one dealing with this. But our place is a quiet, serene place that has, you know, appointments. This isn't a heavy-flow place. This is like one trinkling here and there. I mean, it's like about as slow as it can go. But the safety that is bothering me, sorry, babe, is every time I go past that garden place, it's busy. And I applaud that, I think it's great, but it is packed to the full. And my place isn't like that. There's a car maybe here or there, but it's never like that. And it's got me concerned, the noise, the cars coming in and out, it's got me concerned. I know I risk life and limb just to go out to my mailbox every day. It's very dangerous, and my husband has gotten hit outside of my house just pulling into our driveway. I mean, the traffic is very bad, it's very fast, and having that there where people are coming in and out is gonna pose a threat to people's safety.
I just thought those same concerns, you know, could have been before as well, when you all had asked for that rezoning and conditioning permit. I just wanted to respond to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The others, thank you. Are there others that wish to speak? Please come forward.
My name is Jim Trammell. I am the husband to Suzie Trammell. One of the biggest draws to this piece of property was that young lady and her husband. That property was cited, has been for sale for at least two years. I've driven up and down that roadway, I've lived out in Canesville. I was Last Cassis's first school resource officer, and I still work for the sheriff's department. I know about traffic out that way. They have already told you guys about numerous accidents that have already occurred. Well, guess not, guess what's not out there? Valley growers isn't out there. So these accidents are occurring when we're a mile and a half down the street. Nothing's gonna change on that, on the traffic. I can leave my house between 7:00 and 7:15, and I can get from the school to the red light. If you get past 7:30 to 8 o'clock, you are gonna be backed up in traffic. Now, when I hit the school zone from Canesville Pike and hit 96, guess what's backed up? Traffic. It's the same traffic that's going down the street, that's meeting at the intersection of Compton and 96. This is not gonna be an issue with this garden center. Most of the traffic is gone at 8 o'clock. That's what time we open is at 8 o'clock. I just can't believe that a business that is already existing for 12 years, Mr. Starkey comes in from Florida, has no business history in this state whatsoever. And as far as I know, Commissioner Pay, you supported him coming in here. Nobody knew who he was. We've been there for 12 years. 12 years we have been down at this location. I have been in this county since 1986. I've been a police officer for the last 15 years and served this county well, as far as I'm concerned. And I have just never seen the negative feedback to this. So we'll allow a chiropractic office from an out-of-stater who's never had no business history in this state, but when we got a 12-year business that is leased, it's leased, that means that at any time, that lease can be pulled. Do you think this fiasco that we have been through with the planning commission, with everything else we have been through, and Lord knows, I could tell you a lot, because I have had one of the worst experiences I've ever had dealing with this situation and planning commission. I would figure that the people running the planning commission would know exactly how to vote, and we had some good people who knew exactly what they were doing. But that first vote to deny was denied. Nobody told me that that wasn't an approval. To me, that was an approval. But guess what happened? That's not an approval. We have to have a motion for an approval. And I'm thinking to myself, we just denied the denial. That is my approval to get this to the next step. We take another vote, another vote to approve. One of the people who is forced begin, to begin with, decides to switch sides, and he votes against us. That motion was denied. They had a motion to defer, to defer so that we could have a county meeting. Guys, we have been over backwards to let everybody know in this community that we are trying to rezone this, there's a sign out on front of the piece of property, and I can tell you, there's other businesses that I won't get into that post a note in Murfreesboro Post, and that was about all the notice that the people got. We have went one step further. We have had a community meeting, because in this deferment that was denied, everybody kept saying, well, can we not try to work our differences out? Lord knows, we've tried. I went back into the neighborhood of Brandywood. My zone that I patrolled is Brandywood a year and a half ago, so I worked burglaries, auto burglaries, I know that area well. And as soon as I get into Brandywood, guess what I can't see? I can't see Highway 96, can't even fathom seeing it. Some of the people in the community says, oh, it backs up to my neighborhood, there's a double, there's a double wood buffer in the back. You can't see anything from this area whatsoever. And I'm thinking to myself, that's like me saying, I live on Canesville Pike, if I see another Dollar General come up, it's almost like, Last Cassis Pike, I'll give you a perfect example. That Dollar General was approved. It was approved on a residential piece of property that the commission voted on to rezone it to bring that Dollar General in. That's number one. Number two, I'm thinking, have we gotta be a Dollar General to get any type of respect around here? Because every time I turn around, there's a Dollar General popping up and down the street. I see Mr. Starkey. Nothing against Mr. Starkey. He invited businesses to come next to that piece of property. If I'm the property owner, and I can't sell that piece of property because of the economy, then guess what? I want to try to get that piece of property sold. We would have never even looked at that piece of property had the chiropractic office not been existing on that property. I don't know how much clearer I can make that to anybody in here. As far as I'm concerned, somebody opened the door to allow an existing business, a mile and a half down the street, same side, to come in there and potentially look at, and potentially look and buying that piece of property. Last word that we've heard is that Dollar General is looking to buy another piece of property down the street from the existing garden center that we're at right now. That piece of property is zoned church. That church apparently folded. Let me get this straight. So potentially, we can get denied, but the first Dollar General gets approved on residential property? Starkey's gets zoned in? And this next Dollar General could potentially go and get it rezoned commercial? What's that telling us as small business? I can tell you guys, small business is watching what you guys are doing tonight, and they're thinking, if we're a new business, good God, we don't have a shot. If a 12-year business can't even think about getting approved in a location that is consistent, it is farm-oriented. There's absolutely nothing inappropriate with that location. I talked to Ms. Emsley. She said they couldn't make a recommendation on whether or not we should go there or not, because there were pros and cons for it. It's a 12-year business, people, and for Ms. Starkey to get up here and say that, you know, it's appalling for her to think that we would even consider about being next door to them when they open this door. I'm not the one driving two great big vans that's got these big banners on the side of it, pulled out next to Highway 96. I don't live beside it, but guys, I've gotta pass through it. Where's codes at? I know he's in violation of the codes, but nobody says nothing. But yet, a small business wants to come in there, and yes, you're gonna get some feedback, absolutely. I respect people's opinions on this, but respect the property owner as well. He's got rights just as well as anybody else does. If that's how he wants to zone, then he can zone. But don't turn your back on this small business. Just don't do it. If I'm not mistaken, every single one of you guys have received a letter from our landlord. If I'm not mistaken, that should be correct. All right? I don't know if you read it, but I was appalled. I was appalled to think that our property owner can sit here and not promote this business who's been paying his lease for the last 12 years, and he can write a letter like that. If you haven't read it, then maybe you need to read it. So potentially, if this doesn't get passed through, he gets upset with us, and I'm not saying he has or he hasn't. What happens when he terminates the lease, guys? And we lose a 12-year business out in that Last Cassis neighborhood? It's amazing, because we've got a lot of support from this, lots of support. One of the best things I think we could have done was get a petition to, get a full petition, but guess, guess what? Mr. Jernigan, there's probably constituents who shop at our garden center that's in your zone. Mr. Farley, there's probably some that shop in your zone. So we don't just cater to Brandywood subdivision, we cater all over, Last Cassis being the volume heart. And that's my whole issue here. But to sit here and for us to draw because of the chiropractic office, and then them to get up here and have the nerve to oppose us is the most appalling thing I've ever seen. Because all I can tell you is, is... you is, is just do what's right. And if you can, please vote for us.
My name's David Starkey. I have an office at 3624 Last Castis Pike where I was going to put my mother to live. She didn't come up. So there's a chiropractic office there. I flew up here five times to talk to you gentlemen twice. And I want to thank you everybody for letting me at least talk, to give us all the opportunity to say what we feel. It's a wonderful country to allow us to do that. Some places, they don't allow you to do that. But I flew up here five times. Three of them were for community meetings that we held. One time, nobody showed up. So he rescheduled it again. And Mr. Murphy, an attorney here in town, represented me. I hired an attorney to help me through the process to do the right thing. I wanted to zone it commercial. We weren't living up here yet. I bought the house because my wife wanted to live next to her people. So I came up here and I thought, wow, you know, here's this lady across the street here at the Blue House, the chiropractic office, that is sitting out there every Sunday wanting to sell it. So I thought to myself, you know, I really don't want anybody living over there. It's too close. I mean, it's like, it's right there. So I thought, well, maybe I can get that rezoned commercial so I can have a chiropractic office there. And just, I'd have to walk from here to there to work. So that's what I attempted to do with Mr. Murphy representing me. He told me that after the first meeting and after talking to some of you, that, hey, that ain't going to go. That ain't going to fly. Why don't you try to get a conditional use permit that is no different than the barber down the street, Charlie Pitts, who has a conditional use permit to cut hair? Or, you know, several other places that have the conditional use permit. They're allowed to do their little business there. So that's what I have. I don't have a commercial piece of property. I have a residential piece of property. I'm opposed to it because I have a six and seven-year-old child that live right there and go back and forth, left and right, and go through that area. My six-year-old son can throw a rock and hit the property that is in question here. I fear for them sometimes. I don't want a whole bunch of people coming in and out of there. I don't want them to get involved in that. There's terrible things that are happening. So I'm worried about that. I'm also worried about the value of my property going down. I bought a, you know, a $600,000 home and a $350,000 office that I can't hardly pay for now. But if I have a commercial piece of property over here and I have to sell my chiropractic office, which it's close to that, my value is going to go down because somebody's not going to want to come in here and pay me even close to the amount of money I've got in it. So it brings my property values down. I think, you know, I've shopped at Valley Growers. I like it. Went down there all the time. I'm sorry that this would cause a rift in between us. But because I like these people doesn't mean that I want them to have their business next to where I live. You know, I like a guy, I have a friend that owns a bar. But because I like him, doesn't mean that I want him to have a commercial piece of property next to my residential piece of property. I would just like to thank you guys, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to at least speak and voice my opinion. And I'm against having this being rezoned commercial. God forbid, if something happens to these people and they can't keep the business after having it zoned commercial, the commercial zoning, I understand, goes with the property, not like mine. If I go out on Last Castis Pike and gets hit by a car, my property, if it has to be sold, there's no conditional use permit goes with it. My property is a residence. And the permission to be a chiropractor, I couldn't sell it to another chiropractor. I couldn't say, hey, buy my place and be a chiropractor in here. Because when I sell it, my permit dies. I wanted to say, thanks for letting us speak, and I'm against it.
Are there others that wish to speak? I don't see anyone else rising to speak, so unless someone else rises, we're going to declare this public hearing closed with respect to this request. conditional use permit request and rezoning. Okay, you've heard these speeches and Ms. Allen has risen to speak. Ms. Allen?
I just have a couple of comments I want to make. First of all, we've gotten, as a county, we've gotten very much in the habit of relying on conditional use permits for zoning. And our county attorneys have advised us through the years that that's an errant way to do zoning. So that's the reason that we're moving away from it. You know, the whole idea behind good planning and good zoning is that you zone a property for whatever its use is. And of course, you know, we spend a lot of time and a lot of money rewriting our comprehensive plan and putting together a land use plan. And then now, we're about to be going through the zoning ordinance with all of you, so you'll be more familiar with it as well and the direction that we're heading. And so, you know, there's commercial property that's peppered all along Highway 96 and Last Castis Pike. Maybe not necessarily in this particular spot, except for the chiropractor's property, but there is commercial use all along this state highway. As Doug told us, you know, it's not inconsistent with the plan that we have because for a suburban corridor, it is natural to see commercial development occur. So that was a very important piece of information for me personally as I look at analyzing this, is I don't want to do anything that's inconsistent with the plan because, you know, that's the reason that we want to have one. We want to have a solid growth pattern. And so it makes sense to me that this is not an inconsistent use for this land.
On the border, we have to see what Mr. P would say here.
Normally, before we vote, you'd like to address the representation on the floor.
Until somebody wants to make a motion, the county attorney says we may speak.
But I have the floor. I have yielded the floor, so I can continue to speak.
You may be leading a prelude up to making a motion. We don't know.
I'd like to comment. Normally, after we have a public hearing, you address the commissioner who's district that protects them. And I'm just following what we normally do.
Okay. On my error, I just saw her rise and whoever rises first, I usually recognize them and I apologize. Ms. Allen, would you get to your point and please?
Yes, I'm getting there. Like I said, the land is, it's a suburban corridor. It's on a arterial roadway. It's 55 mile an hour speed limit, which they're very concerned about. And I hear those safety issues. And if that's the case, then perhaps we need to contact TDOT and see about lowering the speed limit on that road if there are, you know, legitimate safety issues there, which it sound like there probably are. I don't feel like using this land in this way would be really any more disruptive than an agricultural use. And, you know, I do think the point's well taken that you've got an established 12-year business that has ties to that community. I feel like we need to give strong consideration to it. I will not make a motion at this point, just simply because I feel like there needs to be further comments made. I do want to yield respectfully to Mr. P. But I did think it was important that we have all the information before we begin our debate and our dialogue on this.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Do you wish to speak, Commissioner P?
I am going to make a recommendation for, I'll make a motion for denial. However, I'd like to say quite a few things along with that. I'll wait to see if there's a second.
Second from Commissioner Black. Now, would you like to continue, Commissioner P?
What Ms. Allen was saying is exactly correct. You know, I'm not refuting anything she's saying. She said, it was just the order that we were doing that in. And no disrespect intended whatsoever. She's a smart lady. We're lucky to have her on planet with us. And just to let you folks know, this has been a super hard decision to make. You know, this business is a very good business. These are very good people. But I'm kind of like Ms. Hickerson. You know, we love these folks to death. But take a minute, look on your desk if you hadn't looked at this. Okay, this is basically what I'm basing my decision on here. If you'll look, the little red spot there in the middle is the proposed zoning change. The yellow right around that are the people that are opposed to that. And if you'll look, those are the majority of the property owners right there. Those are the ones this directly affects. I've got a lot of people in the fourth district that are very much in support of this group. And I support them myself. However, if I'm going to vote on something that you're going to be listening to when you put your head on a pillow at night or get up in the morning, or if you're like me, I've worked a lot of backshifts, so, you know, it could be during the middle of the day. That's why I'm basing my opinion on. There's over 100 people right there that are against it. And there's about nine in that subdivision that I've been able to get total. And there may be a few more than that that are in favor of this. Why I've asked for denial here. Thank you.
A discussion. Commissioner Farley?
Well, I had a lot of phone calls from the people out there in that area. And I told them that I would keep an open mind and I would listen tonight that my decision has not been made before tonight. But I've listened and I've got some questions. And I guess the attorney, one gentleman spoke a while ago about spot zoning. Is this spot
Mr. Demosi may be able to address that as well as Ms. Imbley. But I suppose there are a lot of different ways of looking at spot zoning. It's sometimes a matter of degree. To the extent you've got inconsistent uses in an area already, it's generally considered not spot zoning. If you've got mixed use and that sort of thing. If this were the only property in that area, however you define that area, that was being considered for rezoning commercial, you would probably consider that spot zoning. But you have to look at this whole corridor and determine where is this area? How do you find this area? Where does it start? Where does it end? What is the neighborhood in question? So I think there's a reasonable discretion and debate here as to whether, in fact, this is spot zoning. I heard the definition read earlier. I think that's an appropriate definition. But I think it's also difficult to say, does it apply in this fact situation? I think it's a fairly debatable question that you all have to decide.
The question got brought up about, and I guess Commissioner P, it's your area out there, across the street where Valley View is now, is it residential out there where they're at now?
That's actually Commissioner Black's district.
Oh, is it?
But I believe, I believe there's a subdivision across the street.
So where it's at right now is in a residential area as well, right? Is that correct? Okay. And I guess my next question, as far as a chiropractic office, a precedence. A precedent was brought up a while ago, the word, has a precedence been set with the chiropractic office being there?
I don't think it's a precedent in the sense of legally binding you to have to do anything. I think it's, again, in your discretion as to whether you approve or disapprove the use. It is a fact that it occurred. I think it is a legitimate fact of evidence that you should consider. But I don't think the fact that it exists mandates that you have to approve some other use in this particular case. But it's certainly relevant evidence for you to weigh as you decide whether this would be an appropriate additional use out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Black?
Jim, did you, did I understand you say, I might have misunderstood you, if this gets zoned commercial, that it could be like a conditional use permit if they, God forbid, something happens and it up there or go out of business? Be some certain uses?
Well, it would be, it's zoned, as I understand. And again, Mr. Demosi can speak to this. But it would be if it is a rezoning, so it would be a rezoned use. Let's see what it's called for here. It is rezoning to services. So it's presently residential. It would be a rezoning to services. So whatever qualifies to be in the services zoning area would be eligible to continue in that location.
Commissioner P said these is good people. On this petition, I don't know how many signatures, the one that they brought, Valley Grower, they, I didn't count them, I'd say it's three or 400 of them. Most of them lives in my district. The business right now is located in my district. It's, you know, back when we was talking about the doctor's office, I never did hear no complaints, nothing about it. It was all fine. It was good. And we voted for it. But on this particular place where it's at, where they're wanting to locate now, none of these folks here is for it. And if it gets rezoned commercial, I'm sure I've had some conversation with some of the folks that they are concerned about what might happen, what might come in there. You know, we went with, I think Commissioner Farley, he had a, he had a development at Maribou, Maribella, Maribou, Attic Barfield Development out there. It met all the criteria. It was zoned that way. You come up here and you recommended denial for it to be stopped, if I recollect right.
But that's the thing on point. We're not going to have a, that you finish your statement.
But any, well, excuse me then. But I just don't want to open a can of worms out here on this particular item. And that's my feelings about it.
Now, we will have to let the others speak, Mr. Farley, and then you can have an opportunity. But is anyone that wishes to speak that hasn't spoken first? That's something I have to respect. Well, we're not going to continue that. Ms. Phillips, do you wish to speak?
We have Mr. Demosi give us a list of services that this land could possibly use for.
Mr. Demosi, could you give them a list of the services that would possibly be placed in this if it's zoned commercial for services?
Just to be sure, I understand the question. What you're asking for is if this is zoned for services, what other uses is, okay. Well, under our current zoning code, there are no permitted uses by right in commercial or really any non-residential zone. So the permit that you, and the zoning that you're looking at tonight, is specifically for the landscape nursery. If it's residentially zoned, that's a little bit different. Of course, you're allowed to do religious facilities. You're allowed to do houses, you know, provided they meet the zoning requirements. But as far as non-residential property is concerned, now, the new zoning system that we're looking to move to is different from that. There will actually be a table of uses of, you know, broken down into different categories, commercial, industrial, what have you. And there will be a chart will say, okay, if you're in this zone, these are the things you can do by right. These are the things you can do by what's called a special exception, which is basically the same as a conditional use that we do right now. And then there'll be zones that you can't do certain uses in. But as far as the services zone in and of itself, it's all by conditional use.
So in this instance, it would only be a landscape nursery? Or is this going to go to the new zoning?
Well, typically what we have done, and I'll answer your question, I guess, one of two ways. The first, if it's approved right now, then it'll start out as, yes, just a landscape nursery. Now, what we have done through the zoning process, looking at the new ordinance, looking at the zoning map, is try to fit the existing uses into zones where they match essentially. What we've tried to do is take the existing non-residential uses and put them in the most restrictive commercial zone that would allow the use. So for instance, and I'll just use a convenience market as an example. If you have a convenience market on a piece of property, while it may be permitted in one of three commercial zones, we have put them in the most restrictive commercial zone that it could fit into. That would be what we would probably do here, possibly like a commercial neighborhood zone, which would allow other uses. But zone, which would allow other uses, but would, it would limit the size as far as those uses are concerned. So I hope that answers your question.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak that hasn't spoken? Mr. Schaefer?
Yes, I'd like Mr. Demosie to talk in English to me and come across and say exactly, you're saying that if this was voted in tonight, then it's a landscape nursery until a new comprehensive plan comes over, then it's going to be something similar, but it could be a quick sack.
That's a possibility, depending on what zone is chosen for that site. Yes, sir. Now, something that we have seen, and we've run into while looking at these new zones, there are some uses out in the county that, quite frankly, lend themselves to more heavier commercial-type zones, or maybe even light industrial-type zones. We've elected at that point to keep those zoned residential, and their conditional use permit would just basically grandfather into the new ordinance. That is something we have looked at doing, and we have done on our new proposed zoning map.
Everybody on the front row is having an opportunity. Anybody back there that I'm not seeing? And if not, Commissioner Phillips wishes to say something, I believe.
But I felt like I need to. Doug, do you consider, do you consider this spot zoning?
As Mr. Cope had said, there's a lot of latitude into what is and what is not spot zoning. If, and I'll get to my answer. I don't think that the code, the Tennessee code annotated necessarily says that spot zoning is illegal. I will say, from a planning perspective, it's not good planning practice. I think the fact that there is another non-residential use in the area, my opinion is that it may not necessarily be spot zoning because of that, regardless of the fact that it is zoned for residential purposes. It is essentially a business use on the property. I mean, it's not being used for residential purposes, which is another reason why we, as planners, don't like going the route of, we've dropped the zoning but passed the conditional use permit for a piece of property, just because essentially it's still a business on residential land at that point.
If this piece of property... I don't know how to say this without it sounding like I don't honor property rights, but I think the rights of property owners out of the 100 houses that are around there speaks volumes to me. And if I lived in that neighborhood, I'd be looking at the zoning, commercial zoning, not the business that's going in there. And I think that's what we keep saying, is that they're good people. And I agree with that. They're good people. But we're looking at zoning commercial property in what I consider a neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. Now, you can say that that's a residential neighborhood out there where they are now, but it's not a platted neighborhood like this is. And that's my big issue with this, is that it's a commercial-zoned piece of property going into a residential neighborhood. It has nothing to do, absolutely nothing to do with that Valley Growers. Now, if we were sitting here saying, okay, it's a convenience market that's going to sell beer going in there, would there anybody vote for it? And that's a commercial zone too, correct?
It would have to be, yes, sir.
Okay. So you can't draw those comparisons with a nursery and with a beer joint, or a quick sack, or anything, or a Dollar General that's going in there. But my issue with this now, and at the Planning Commission, is that it will be the only commercial zone in that neighborhood. And if it passes, I guarantee darn to ya, it won't be the last. And that's what these people are saying. And to me, that's protecting property rights.
Any other question, Mr. Demosie? But still we... Are you, do you want to talk to Mr. Demosie, or you just want to make a... Thank you, Mr. Demosie. Mr. Farley.
I want to address something, a comment that was made a while ago professionally. Malibu Estates was in my district, and I asked the people to deny it. And the reason it was, was because it was a flooding issue out there that was, had been there for years. It was, had nothing to do with anything else, but that was the reason that it was asked to be denied, a big time flooding, because homes were going to be flooded in that subdivision. So Commissioner Black, that's the reason it was asked to be denied. I just want to address that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think we've covered that respectfully.
Did the lawsuit file afterwards, after we denied it?
Mr. Black, if you want to address...
Did we lose it?
You're ruled out of ordinance. You want to address, you may address anything regarding this particular application. We're not going to address any other previous applications that we're not having on the floor for any discussion. Now, who else would like to speak?
I'd call for question.
Call for the question. Second, want to call in for the question from anyone? Second, any discussion on that at all? In favor of calling for the question, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right. Madam Clerk?
Motion to deny.
All right. The motion is to deny the request for this conditional use permit in commercial zoning.
A yes will be to deny.
A yes will be to deny. Correct. We're going to do electronic vote on this. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Fourteen yes, seven no. Motion passes.
Motion passes. The request is denied. Ladies and gentlemen, the chair is going to call a point of personal privilege. We're going to have a five-minute recess, and I will mean five-minute recess. So thank you very much. We're now ready to reconvene, and we will resume where we left off with the agenda. And we're ready for public comments. We have four people that wish to speak on public comments tonight, and our first speaker is Mr. Donald Todd. Come forward and give us your name and address. And we remind our speakers, they're, I think all familiar, with our three-minute limit.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Follow financial advice of state experts. Lately, we have been made aware of financial problems within the sheriff's office. We need to follow a plan that will eliminate the shortfalls in Sheriff Arnold's budget. Commissioners, you apparently are not aware that you can rewrite the tax rate in any one of the major funds, for example, the highway fund. I have personally consulted with officials in the state comptroller's office who have suggested this remedy. This is feasible because the highway fund, due to an oppressive maintenance-of-effort type of law, usually has a large balance of unspent surplus revenue. Through rewriting the tax rate, we can save money in that fund so as to make it possible to provide a larger appropriation to the sheriff's budget within the general fund. It's legal. We can do it. In order to make this financial transaction more economical, additional money can be saved by stopping excessive deposits of unspent surplus revenue into ultra-low interest, less than one-half percent, LGIP savings accounts. In addition, we must adopt new laws or new policies so that we discontinue making unwise purchases of low-interest CDs with this unspent surplus revenue. Traditionally, our county should follow the law that requires that when we appropriate taxpayers' money to the budget to be used for a specific purpose, we cannot legally use the appropriated unspent surplus revenue for purchasing a certificate of deposit or for making a deposit in one of the LGIP savings accounts. This illegal action involves using this money for a purpose other than for what has been designated in the appropriation. If the surplus revenue were recycled back into the budgetary process and kept within the original fund where the surplus originated, the constitutional desires of taxpayers would be upheld. Otherwise, according to Gerald R. Klatt, who was a specialist in government accounting, and I agree, accumulating the unspent surplus revenue and maintaining the same $6.4 to $7 million balance year after year, from 2005 to 2011, in the highway fund can be described as stealing from the taxpayers. Also, when we over-appropriate for many consecutive years, creating surpluses, this policy results in unnecessary excess taxation and also unwisely removes the money from the budgetary process. A law needs to be passed to ensure that Sheriff Arnold receives some of the unspent surplus. If not, it should be refunded to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Daniels.
My name is Jim Daniel. That's a nickname. My full name is Doris, with two Rs, Colwell Daniel Jr. My granddaddy thought I was named after him. His name was James. So my folks and everybody concealed that from me until I got through sixth grades. So anyway, with a start like that, here's what I'm here about tonight. I support the mayor with regard to the change in the legal services agreement. I have to say that I have no complaints about Mr. Cope and his people getting me off from the lawsuit about the mosque, and I have no problems, no animosity toward anybody. But I think we're in a position now where, as things get more complicated, more complex, we need somebody, a single voice in our government, to speak for us and advise our department heads and other people of what they can do and what they can't do. We get in trouble about due process and all these things, and it's not our county attorney's fault, but we do. And we need some supplementation of the kind of total allegiance to the county's interests that is hard to maintain if you've got a whole, long list of clients, and some of them get in trouble with the county or wanting the county to do something. And there lies the problem. How do you get rid of conflict of interest? Well, there are ways, and I'm not casting any aspersions on anyone, but you know that some people are always going to be saying, well, why didn't he do this? Or that was a conflict of interest. You won't see that if you have a unified county attorney working on salary in the courthouse or in the structure. And that's all I really am up here to talk about. So thank you very much. You know me, some of you do, because I used to be on the commission. But I'm just very concerned that we need to streamline our government and get it out from, under any question that we can correct that is unfortunate. It may not be the fault of anybody, but it's there. I hear it regularly. I try to correct it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Susan Allen.
I'm here tonight also to address the matter of the county setting, creating a county law department. And I know you're going to take it up under other business, and I hope that, for your sake and mine, that it's before 10:30 tonight. We were surprised to read in the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I gave my address. My address is 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. We were surprised to read in the Daily News Journal this morning that there wasn't unanimous support for creating a county law department in the Budget Committee. In 2009, when this proposal was first brought, was introduced in the Steering Committee, the RNA did a lot of research, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance did a lot of research into what a county legal department might look like. And we think that Sumner County has a good model to follow. While not comparing apples to apples, Sumner County's private act calls for the law director, and I'm going to quote, "to transact all the legal business of the county, either in court or otherwise, and to advise the county officials upon legal matters affecting their offices. And no officer of the county shall employ any other attorney unless such other attorney shall be required by the conflicting nature of specific litigation involved, or such other attorney shall be employed at the personal expense of the county officer, or the other attorney shall be specifically authorized and empowered by the Sumner County Board of Commissioners." I've given you a handout tonight that has the summary of the Sumner County General Fund, and on the back of that sheet is a breakdown of what the Sumner County Attorney expenditures have been from 2006 until this year. In looking at those budget-itemized expenses on the second side, keep in mind that those numbers reflect the legal services for all their departments. The Rutherford County Law Director will likely not be providing services for the school board or the sheriff's department. I don't know the specifics around the 2009, 2010 increase in their budget, as I was unable to get ahold of Mrs. Denon today, but I suspect it was probably to cover unusual litigation expenses. And Mrs. Nolan can probably give you accurate figures of what our expenses, our legal expenses that accrued over the last year. The Sumner County Law Director also has a contract that spells out quite clearly that the county can, one, terminate the agreement for cause, or, two, if the law director becomes mentally or physically disabled and can no longer perform the duties of the office, or, three, if the Tennessee Board of Professional Responsibilities rules that she has committed an offense that requires a public disciplinary action. None of these things can be accomplished under the legal services agreement that we have today. And these are the kind of controls that you, the commission, should have regarding our legal representation and legal expenditures. And I hope you will consider going forward with the process of setting up the county, a new county legal department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms... Next, we'll have Mr. Steve Schroeder.
I live at 676 Cottonfield Lane in Commissioner Farley's district. I'd like to speak about aspects regarding an office for the Rutherford County Attorney. I've given you guys a handout, which includes my comments and also a section of the private act that might be, that's applicable. First, I want to thank Mayor Burgess for initiating the discussion with regard to the county attorney's office. Also, I want to thank Mr. Cope and his office for serving the county for all these years. Second, I read that an issue tonight will be the consideration of forming an office for a county attorney. This has been discussed by the commission several months ago with emphasis on the cost savings to the county. Also, having our own attorney would eliminate potential conflicts of interest that might occur should the county have, have to litigate with the client of Mr. Cope's law firm. With these considerations, I ask you to favorably consider forming a Rutherford County Attorney's Office. Third, selection process for county attorney. The person selected for a county attorney will likely hold that office for a number of years. Consequently, the selection process deserves some consideration. I'd like to suggest the following. The Human Resources Department will advertise for candidates. The mayor and the Human Resources Director will screen responding candidates. The top several, say six, will be further evaluated and interviewed by an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee will then make its recommendation to the full commission for action. I ask that the current members of the Rutherford County Steering Committee be considered and accept membership to this ad hoc committee. They have served the county well and obviously have the confidence of the other members of the commission. Further, those committee members would be asked to be active until a county attorney is hired. Additionally, the above process, pardon me, may extend beyond the current target date of 30 June. This should not be a problem since the county can hire additional legal counsel as needed. This is in accordance with the Private Acts of 2010, Chapter 56. The commissioners have been given a copy. I'll read Section 2 to you. Section 2, quote, "Rutherford County may enter such additional written agreements with private attorneys and law firms for the provision of additional legal services as the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners may deem appropriate," end quote. To close, I ask that you approve the formation of an office for the Rutherford County Attorney and also that you form an ad hoc committee of your members to conduct final screening and interviewing of attorney candidates with subsequent recommendation to the full commission for approval. Thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're ready for elections and confirmations, and we recognize Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. The Steering Committee has several recommendations or announcements at this time. On your desk, you would find a copy of notary candidates, and I move for their election.
Second from Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much.
Second, we need to announce two vacancies on the Lineball Library Board. Thirdly, we need to announce vacancies on the Road Board and School Board Zone Committees, which will make up a one county commissioner, one school board member, one road board member, one member from the Murfreesboro community, one from the Smyrna community, one from Laverne, and one from Eagleville, and two from the unincorporated areas. The represented for Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, Eagleville, and the two unincorporated areas will be non-office holders. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooch. There's no unfinished business. Then we go to reports by standing committees. The Purchasing Committee has no report tonight, so now we're ready for Commissioner Ely to start with the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee.
Item K-2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the General Fund be amended as follows. Juvenile Court, from unassigned fund balance, $10,000 to other contracted services, $10,000. This amendment is necessary because of the demand and the use of the magistrate has been higher than expected. Property Assessor to reappraisal, from property assessor, overtime pay, $340, and the related benefits going to reappraisal overtime and the related benefits. Miscellaneous, from unassigned fund balance, $200,000 to judgments, $200,000 for various liability claims. Employee benefits, from employee insurance, $27,645. Unassigned fund balance, $4,355, going to other fringe benefits. This is to provide funding for the health insurance matching for the retirees of the General Fund. Other public health and welfare, from unassigned fund balance, $35,000 to other contracted services, $35,500. This is for funding for autopsies. Sheriff's Department and jail, from the sheriff, communications equipment, $4,000. From the jail, other contracted services, $6,000, going to jail custodial supplies, $10,000. Increased revenue for contributions of $800, increased expenditures to the jail, other supplies and materials, this is for supplies for the community vegetable garden. Increased revenue, contract for administrative services, $54,066. Increased expenditures, are going to increase expenditures for the jail, overtime pay and the related benefits, $44,947, and the related benefits. This amendment recognizes dollars that were billed to the Board of Education for the Sheriff's Department to provide security at school functions. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Serino. Does anyone have any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes. She has a little glitch. Just a moment in the operation here. Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Right, thank you.
Item K-2B, ambulance service fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, from assigned for public health and welfare, $70,000, going to gasoline, $70,000. Increased revenue, patient charges, $90,000. Increased expenditures, other contracted services. This is to pay the billing company. The company has collected more this fiscal year than anticipated. From assigned for public health and welfare, $10,000 to judgments, $10,000. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item K-2C, special purpose fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. The asset forfeiture funds from the Sheriff's Department, increased revenue of $1,143, increased expenditures going to in-service training, $1,143. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Journey again. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, motion passes.
Item K-2D, a solid waste sanitation fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste sanitation fund be amended as follows. From assigned for public health and welfare, $10,000 to judgments, $10,000. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner P. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Item passes.
Item K-2E, a highway fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. Administration and highway and bridge maintenance, from administration, building and contents insurance, $4,358. Liability insurance, $32,738. From highway and bridge maintenance, crushed stone, $150,000. To administration, judgments, $187,096. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? Commissioner McAdoo.
On this particular one, administration and judgments, can you explain judgments with...
Settle a liability claim.
Last three that I've seen that you've talked about has been to settle liability claims under that department, correct? Okay.
Right, that's correct. Any other questions? Please cast your votes. I want to, yeah.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Item K-2F, education capital projects fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the education capital projects fund be amended as follows. From committed for capital projects, $165,485. Increased revenue, trustees collection prior year, $11,212. Clerk and master collections, $4,889. Increased expenditures, Board of Education trustees commission, $1,500. And the education capital projects, architects, $2,550. Engineering services, $4,240. Maintenance and repair of buildings, $160,030. And regular instruction equipment, $13,266. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Item K-2G, the central cafeteria fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the central cafeteria fund be amended as follows. Food service, increased revenue, lunch payments for children, $150,000. Sell of equipment, $459. USDA reimbursement lunch, $600,000. USDA commodities, $1,400,000. USDA reimbursement for breakfast, $220,000. USDA reimbursement, fresh fruits and vegetables, $20,000. Decreased revenue, breakfast payments, children, $3,500. A la carte sales, $16,000. Investment income, $2,000. Miscellaneous refunds, $38,420. State school food service, $993. Increased expenditures, supervisor-director, $35,000. Bookkeepers, $10. Cafeteria personnel, $45,000. Other salaries and wages, $6,000. Social Security, $7,700. State retirement, $35,000. Medical insurance, $30,000. Unemployment compensation, $24,000. Employer Medicare, $2,330. Communication, $272. Postal charges, $200. Travel, $2,700. Food supplies, $550,000. USDA commodities, $1,400,000. Other supplies and materials, $39,000. Audit services, $211,000. For an increase to the restricted for operation for non-instructional services, $152,123. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Oh, she did an excellent job. I'm going to rule on that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No questions or discussion. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Item K-2H, general purpose school fund budget amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. I will tell you, no new funds or positions are included in this amendment. We're just putting the dollars in the major functions where it is needed. State retirement, from special education state retirement, $1,700. Vocational education state retirement, $8,300. Attendance state retirement, $3,380. Medical services state retirement, $5,000. Other student support state retirement, $7,900. Alternative school state retirement, $2,500. To regular education state retirement, $570. Adult education state retirement, $1,984. Office of principal state retirement, $13,200. Fiscal services state retirement, $3,026. Plant operations state retirement, $10,000. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, was that Commissioner Turner? All right, any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record your votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Item K-2I, resolution authorizing a capital lease with Excel Energy Group for energy-efficient water upgrade for the Rutherford County schools. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to install district-wide, energy-efficient water upgrades in order to generate savings from lower water, sewer, gas, and electricity consumption, and whereas it is being proposed that the Rutherford County Board of Commission, Board of Education enter into an agreement with Excel Energy Group to install approximately 4,136 water control units at a net project cost of $1,461,013, with a projected annual savings of $223,533, which yields a payback of six and one-half years. And whereas Excel Energy Group is proposing to arrange the financing with Cruz &amp; Associates, Inc., at an interest rate of 3 and 7 tenths percent over seven years, with semi-annual payments and providing 92 percent of the necessary cash flow over the life of the project. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Rutherford County Board of Education be and is here authorized to enter into a contract with Excel Energy Group for a district-wide, energy-efficient water project at a cost of $1,461,013. And additionally, to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Cruz &amp; Associates, Inc., a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for financing the project at an interest rate of 3 and 7 tenths percent over seven years, subject to the review and approval by the county attorney. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second from Commissioner P. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
20 yes, 0 no's. Motion passes.
Item K-2J, a resolution authorizing the 2012-13 property casualty crime, public officials, and educators' legal liability renewals. Whereas the property and casualty, property and casualty insurance are expiring July 1, 2012, and whereas it is being proposed to renew the property and inland marine coverage with travelers with a retention of $100,000 at an annual cost of $389,780, which is an increase of 6 percent. And whereas it is being proposed to renew the crime insurance coverage with Great American at an annual cost of $8,900, which is the same rate as current.
current. And whereas it is being proposed to renew the casualty insurance coverage with ACE USA at an annual cost of seven hundred nine thousand five hundred dollars, which is a net decrease in premium of three percent, and provides a safety training credit of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents regarding the property, inland marine, crime, and casualty insurance renewals, effective January one, two thousand twelve, at a cost of one million one hundred eight thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner McAdoo. Any questions or discussion?
I said what? Oh, which one?
Well, anyway, the resolution says July the first.
I read January. Okay, these renewals are effective July one, two thousand twelve. Thank you.
Have a motion, second, and please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, zero no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K two K, A Resolution Authorizing an Interlocal Agreement with the City of Murfreesboro for the Two Thousand Twelve Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program Award. Whereas the City of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County have been informed by the Department of Justice of their eligibility to receive a joint award of sixty-two thousand six hundred twenty-six dollars from a federal grant program called the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, with the City of Murfreesboro to receive thirty-one thousand three hundred thirteen dollars, and Rutherford County to receive thirty-one thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. And whereas to receive the award, the program requires that the application be filed jointly between the county and city, and an interlocal agreement be executed between the two entities, agreeing upon the amount of funds each is to receive, and which agency will file the application on behalf of both entities. And whereas it is being proposed that the City of Murfreesboro be designated as the fiscal agent to file the application on behalf of both entities, request the drawdown of funds, and pass the agreed-upon portion of the funds on to Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials be and are hereby authorized to enter into the interlocal agreement with the City of Murfreesboro, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, designating the City of Murfreesboro as the fiscal agent to apply for the Two Thousand Twelve Burn Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of Rutherford County, with the share being thirty-one thousand three hundred thirteen dollars applied to the City of Murfreesboro, and Rutherford County to receive the sum of thirty-one thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. Additionally, that the county mayor also be authorized to accept the grant, subject to it being awarded. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. I move for approval, Mister Chairman.
Second, by Commissioner Coggan. Discussion, questions? Please cast your votes.
Or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Item came, K two L, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Elections. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of an available grant from the Tennessee Division of Elections in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars, which requires no matching funds for the provision of certified voting equipment. And whereas the grant contract shall be effective for the period commencing on February one, two thousand twelve, and ending on June thirty, two thousand thirteen. And whereas it is being proposed to lease one hundred forty-six micro-vote infinity machines at a rate of nine hundred sixty-nine dollars each. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute the grant contract with the Tennessee Division of Elections, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of one hundred forty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars, to provide funding for the Election Commission to lease additional certified voting machines. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, from Commissioner P. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Item K two M, A Resolution Authorizing a Grant Contract with the Tennessee Department of Military Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified of a grant award from the Tennessee Department of Military Tennessee Emergency Management Agency for the provision of pass-through funding for the administration and completion of an approved hazard mitigation plan. And whereas the total cost of the project is five hundred thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, with a federal share of four hundred three thousand four hundred and six dollars. And whereas the non-federal share of one hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars will be equally shared by Rutherford County and the State of Tennessee at an amount of sixty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty cents for each entity. And whereas the grant will provide funding to acquire and demolish three substantially damaged residential properties located at six-two-nine-one Florence Road, Smyrna, Tennessee, five-oh-eight Deerfield Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and six-nine-eight-eight Old Woodbury Pike, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, with the properties to be maintained by Rutherford County as open space. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute a grant contract with the Tennessee Department of Military Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of four hundred seventy thousand five hun, four hundred seventy thousand six hundred forty dollars and fifty cents. And additionally, that the general fund be amended as follows, to provide a transfer from the development tax to the General Capital Projects Fund to provide the funding for Rutherford County's share. From restricted for capital projects, sixty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars to transfers out, sixty-seven thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record, record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item K two N, A Resolution Authorizing a Contract with Regional Transportation Authority for Relax and Ride Program. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be authorized to execute a contract with the Regional Transportation Authority, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of certain grant-funded transportation services for a period beginning July one, two thousand twelve, ending June thirty, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. I move for approval, Mister Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Sereno. Questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, zero no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item K two O, A Resolution Authorizing a Service Agreement with Apertain Corporation, South Central Tennessee Development District for Dead Stock Removal. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a service agreement with Apertain Corporation, South Central Tennessee Development District for removal and disposal services for all dead livestock within the county, for a term of twelve months, commencing on July one, two thousand twelve, at a cost of thirty-three thousand seven hundred, thirty-three thousand seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a service agreement with Apertain Corporation, South Central Tennessee Development District. A copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for removal and disposal services of all dead livestock within the county, for a term of twelve months, commencing on July one, two thousand twelve. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve. Mister Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes. Let's, let's record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Now Commissioner Cook, what was that question, please? Apertain is, I think they're out of Pulaski, Tennessee. All right, we're finished with that. A great job again, Commissioner Ely. Health and Education Committee, report, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It's always good to follow the dead livestock report. Whereas the attached no-cost contract by and between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and the State of Tennessee Department of Health for completion of the construction renovation of county health department facilities located at one-oh-eight David Collins Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee, a copy of said no-cost contract being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein at length verbatim, as if set forth herein, has been approved by the Health and Education Committee, and whereas it is the, in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, for this county to enter into said no-cost contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the no-cost contract with the State of Tennessee Department for Health for completion of the construction renovation of the county health department facilities located at one-oh-eight David Collins Drive, Smyrna, Tennessee, according to the terms and provisions contained in said no-cost contract. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials far and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute far and on behalf of Rutherford County the no-cost contract with the State of Tennessee Department of Health, resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand and twelve. Mister Chairman, I so move.
Second, from Commissioner Turner. Any questions? All in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Next, there is no report from the Property Management Committee. We're ready for a Public Safety Committee. They have one resolution.
Whereas funds are available through the State of Tennessee Animal-Friendly License Plates Program, and whereas Rutherford County may apply for a grant from said program requiring no matching funds to benefit Rutherford County Paws. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that application be made for the maximum allowable grant through the State of Tennessee Animal-Friendly License Plates Program to benefit Rutherford County Paws, and that the appropriate officials far and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute any documents required for the submission of the grant proposal and acceptance thereof, if awarded. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve, and I so move, Mister Chairman.
Second, from Commissioner Schaefer. Questions? Let's see here. Well, I was gonna, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Report from the Public Works and Planning Committee, Commissioner Jernigan.
Public Works and Planning Committee's got three resolutions tonight. First resolution is to prove drainage easements. One is at forty-twenty-one East Compton, one on Factory Road, and one Magnolia Trace. The next resolution would be to submit and accept litter and trash collection grant for county roads, and the third one would be to approve a contract with the State of Tennessee for litter removal activities on state highway. Whereas pursuant to the Private Act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. Attached Exhibit One are the easements recommended by the planning department. Whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of public drainage easements as submitted by the planning department. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approves as an additional public drainage easement, the attached list Exhibit One as submitted by the planning department in accordance with Tennessee Code Annated five-four-dash-nine-oh-three and five-four-dash-nine-oh-four. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this seventeenth day of May of two thousand twelve, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Black. Questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Resolution authorizing submission of application for litter and trash collection grant from Tennessee Department of Transportation and authorizing the acceptance of said grant. Whereas Rutherford County intends to apply for the affordability grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation to be executed from January first, two thousand twelve, to June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. And whereas the contract for the grant will impose certain legal obligations upon Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved that the county mayor of Rutherford County is authorized to apply on behalf of Rutherford County for a litter and trash collection grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. And dead, should said application be approved by the Tennessee Department of Transportation, the county mayor is hereby authorized to execute contracts or necessary documents which may be required to significantly accept them of the litter and trash collection grant by Rutherford County. Resolve this seventeenth day of May, two thousand twelve, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Allen. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Whereas the attached contract by and between the Department of Transportation, State of Tennessee, and Rutherford County, Tennessee, for litter removal activities on state highway, a copy of said contract being attached here too as Exhibit One, and incorporated herein at length, as if set forth for later, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate officials far and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby authorized to enter into and execute far and on behalf of Rutherford County the contract with the Department of Transportation, State of Tennessee.
Transportation, State of Tennessee for litter removal activities on state highways within Rutherford County. Resolve this 17th day of May, 2012, I so move.
Second from Commissioner Jordan and others. Any discussion? Please cast, not, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Cogan, we're ready for the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, if you will, the first two items are simply ratifications of resolutions that we've passed, I believe back in December, and sent to the state to be enacted, and they have done so, and this is a resolution to adopt that private chapter. The first one is Private Chapter Number 49, House Bill Number 3847, Senate Bill Number 3767, relative to the Rutherford County Board of Education. And I guess, make sure I get this right, Mr. Mayor, you can correct me, this one is regarding the Board of Education. The second one is in reference to the county highway department, and just to refresh your memory, is to kind of clean up the road board and school board zones to make them their terms for the road board and I think just the number on the Board of Education. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the first one, whereas the General Assembly has enacted Private Chapter 49, House Bill Number 3847, Senate Bill Number 3767, relative to the Rutherford County Board of Education, and whereas a two-thirds vote of the legislative body is required to approve Private Chapter 49, House Bill Number 3847, Senate Bill Number 3767, with certification of the same to the Secretary of State. And whereas a copy of Private Chapter 49, House Bill Number 3847, Senate Bill Number 36...3767, is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Now therefore be it resolved by the road board of...by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Private Chapter Number 49, House Bill Number 3847, Senate Bill Number 3767B, and the same hereby is adopted, ratified, and approved by Rutherford County. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a notice to the Secretary of State of the State of Tennessee of the ratification of the Private Act as required by law, resolve this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any questions or discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote, I think maybe it'd be wise to just do an electronic vote, just to be sure it's recorded. So please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no, motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution adopting Private Chapter Number 47, House Bill Number 3840, Senate Bill Number 3765, and Private Chapter 59, House Bill 3841, Senate Bill Number 3766, relative to the Rutherford County Highway Department. Whereas the General Assembly has enacted Private Chapter Number 47, House Bill Number 3840, Senate Bill Number 3765, and Private Chapter 59, House Bill 3841, Senate Bill 3766, relative to the Rutherford County Highway Department. And whereas a two-thirds vote of the legislative body is required to approve Private Chapter 47, House Bill Number 3840, Senate Bill Number 3765, and Private Chapter 59, House Bill 3841, Senate Bill 3766, with certification of the same to the Secretary of State. And whereas copies of the Private Chapter 47, House Bill Number 3840, Senate Bill Number 3765, and Private Chapter 59, House Bill 3841, Senate Bill 3766, are attached here too as collective Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that Private Chapter 47, House Bill Number 3840, Senate Bill Number 3765, and Private Chapter 59, House Bill 3841, Senate Bill 3766B, and the same hereby are adopted, ratified, and approved by Rutherford County. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a notice to the Secretary of State of the State of Tennessee of ratification of the Private Acts as required by law, resolve this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Mr. Turner. Any questions on that? Again, two-thirds vote is required, we're going to, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no, motion passes.
Next, Commissioners, we have a resolution to approve the maps as presented by Election Commission, changing commission districts to conform to state senate lines. I believe you've all received a copy of those changes in your pocket. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it approves the recommendation of the Rutherford County Election Commission, changing some commission district lines to conform to state senate lines, maps of each change being attached here too as collective Exhibit A and incorporated herein as if set forth verbatim. Resolve this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, was that Commissioner Pease? Discussion or questions? Discussion or questions? You're ready to vote. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very much.
Next, Commissioners, for information only, no action needs to be taken on this. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we had a situation regarding the application submission report, I have placed a copy of an application, the current application that's being used by the county mayor's office or for the county on your desk tonight. If you flip it over to, you'll see at first, on the top of the page, the title has been changed to simply state "Application for Service on Rutherford County Board of Committee", without any further instructions on there. On the back are instructions that the committee simply asked the mayor's office to put on the form, wasn't a formal motion or resolution, it was just simple, so I wanted to provide you all with the copy so you'd know what the new form and instructions looked like. Any questions or thoughts on that piece, on this? Okay, next item is the Legal Services Agreement. I just want to report, did you want to...
Could I make a statement?
Yes.
On Tuesday, the mayor presented a budget in which we would hire an in-house attorney to provide general legal services for a total cost of $338,000. That total cost includes the salary of the attorney, the salary of two secretaries, related benefits, and some supplies. I would like to present an amendment designed to save some money. This is an amendment to recontract with Mr. Cope and his attorneys to provide general legal services for the county next year at a total cost of $259,000. This would be approximately an $80,000 savings from the proposed amount for an in-house attorney. The $259,000 figure is actually the total cost that Mr. Cope and his attorneys charged in the 2009, 2010 fiscal year to provide general legal services. That's four budget cycles ago. This proposal goes back to that number. If you'd indulge me for a moment, I'd like to pass out a copy of the resolution because it has in print some of these details. Commissioner Schaefer, could I ask you to pass some of these down your row, and then we'll pass some of them down this second row, and I may have given you a disproportionately large amount. I'll start reading slowly. Whereas the Legal Services Agreement with the county attorney, James C. Cope, and his law firm, previously approved by the county commission, provided for a two-year term expiring June 30, 2012, for certain legal services, and whereas certain members of the budget committee expressed a desire to receive a proposal for legal services for a new two-year term, and whereas the proposal received from the county attorney, James C. Cope, and law firm provides a savings to Rutherford County for legal service, legal services, which is $79,560 less than the budget for a full-time county attorney being proposed by the county administration, and whereas the county recognizes the need for the quality and experienced legal services provided by the present county attorney and his law firm, and whereas the county has the opportunity to continue said legal services on a more cost-effective basis than that being proposed by the budget recommended by the county administration. Now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners authorizes, approves, and directs that the present county attorney, James C. Cope, and his law firm be employed as the county attorney pursuant to the Private Act and existing legal services agreement for the period July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2014. Number two, that the county attorney's salary remain at $72,000 per year. Number three, that the budget for the county attorney for general legal services be set at $259,000, which includes the county attorney's salary of $72,000. Number four, that the county attorney's budget represents a savings of $79,560 to the county from the budget proposed by the county administration for legal services for the fiscal year 2012...2013. Number five, that the hourly rate pay previously established for the general legal services in Section 2B of the Legal Services Agreement be deleted, and that the county attorney and law firm shall perform the general legal services under Section 2B for a flat amount of $259,000 for general legal services, including the county attorney's salary and costs attributable to said salary. Accordingly, $259,000 shall be budgeted for general legal services under the county attorney's office. Number six, the Legal Services Agreement shall be amended to reflect the provisions here and above, except as amended here and above, all other provision of the Legal Services Agreement previously adopted by the commission shall continue in full force and effect. Number seven, that the county mayor and all other county officials be and the same are hereby authorized and directed to enter into an amended Legal Services Agreement in accordance with this resolution.
Second, Commissioner Stevens. Stevens, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had an alternative to that, but this was so much better than what I had. At first glance, setting up a county legal department sounds like a good idea, but the more and the more that I've thought about it and researched this, I don't think it's a good idea at all. I think we're on track to make a huge mistake if we set up this in-house department, and I've become very passionate about this, the more that I've researched and learned about it. I think there's going to be possible consequences that will ensue if we do this. We're at a serious crossroads with this decision, and I hope we will take it very seriously and think through it. We don't want to open the door for another county government bureaucracy. I truly believe that if we go with this in-house plan as the county mayor's office has proposed, that we're going to have a much more expensive outcome in a few years. And I'm going to ask you to support this plan for five reasons. One is the cost savings. Two is the competency of the services that we have. Three is that we don't need a concentration of power. Four is the circumstances in which this proposal has been made. And five is just plain old common sense. So let's go through all of these one by one, if you don't mind. The first one is the cost savings. I still have not quite figured out what the, your proposal was $338,000, is that right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How are we going to save money if we're only paying them $259 for this now?
$259,000, the first I've heard about it is now. The current year that we're in, we've spent more than this. I mean, this is an option that's been provided that we haven't discussed, and I can't say that we're going to save money on the $259. This would be less than the budget that I proposed.
Okay. How much did we spend on the county attorney's office prior to keeping time, when he started turning in time to it?
This is the number that's been quoted, I don't have that information, Ms. Nolan may have that.
Was it $108,000 for his salary and then plus...
Benefits and plus the staff associated with that.
So when he started keeping time, his fee doubled, is what it sounds like to me.
Oh, if it doubled, but it's in excess of what it was, yes.
Okay. So Mr. Cope worked for 20-some-odd years and wasn't paid for all of his services.
That's your assessment.
Well, it seems like if he was charging for hours and made $100-and-some-odd-thousand more dollars, he was working for a pretty good rate before we started getting him to keep time, but that's irrelevant for this discussion, I suppose. If we're going to be spending $80,000 more, I just don't see how we're going to save any money. Now, I did some research for other counties around us and around the state for what they do. Williamson and Wilson County both use outside counsel, similar to the arrangement that we already have. Hamilton County, which is the most similar in size to us, has three attorneys plus the staff. Knox County has nine attorneys, one paralegal, six secretaries, one investigator, and they bragged to me on the phone today how they had just hired a new attorney. Shelby County has 15 full-time lawyers, 14 part-time lawyers plus the staff, and Davidson County, which is twice our size, has 31 lawyers on staff plus all the supporting people to help them. Now, we're not going to save money if we set up another bureaucracy here. You and I know that this department's going to be like every other department, they're going to want more money. They're going to have to have more money every year to cope. This is just going to be another big, bloated, burly bureaucratic behemoth, and it's going to want to be fed more each year with money that we don't have. So I'm asking, especially in this budget year, when we're looking at a $20 million shortfall in our expenditures, why in the world would we add more expenses to our budget? The second reason that I support keeping Mr. Cope is just basic competency. Mr. Cope has seven lawyers in his office who are all highly skilled, they're very professional, they're all knowledgeable, they all have different areas of expertise. If you call and ask general questions about procedure, you might talk to Mr. Cope. If you've got a question about delinquent taxes, you'll talk to Roger Hudson. If you have a question about the sheriff's office, you might talk to Mr. Santel, and it goes on and on. Mr. Cope has a good reputation around town, all of the lawyers in his office have a good reputation around town for being very thorough, diligent, professional, and all that they do. I've personally learned a lot from Mr. Cope, just listening in the two years that I've been sitting here in this chair, when he's answered questions. He's very skilled at what he does, those attorneys are also very involved in our community. And why in the world would we risk losing seven outstanding attorneys and community servants when we don't even have a clue who's going to apply to replace them? This is a solid track record, why in the world would we want to get rid of that? Now the second reason under competency is that, I'm just telling you now, one lawyer can't do this job. One lawyer cannot manage 450 delinquent property tax lawsuits, attend all the meetings, draft the resolutions, answer the phone, issue legal opinions. It's just not possible. This is going to be a $600,000 or $700,000 department before the end of next year because that lawyer's going to be overworked. This is just simply too much for one person to handle, and it's very misleading and/or naive to assume that one lawyer can do this job. I'm telling you that it's not possible. I'm in a law office every day, I know how it works, and this is just not going to work. Jim Cope and his law associates are all highly skilled. We simply will not be able to find this much experience, knowledge, ability, proficiency, talent, and competency in one person or a group of people. Jim Cope is one of the best lawyers in this county, period, and he's served us well. Why change? The third reason that I support keeping Mr. Cope is the circumstances that have surrounded this transaction. Did Mr. Cope receive any notice that this was going to be on the steering committee, Mr. Chairman?
I'd give him notice.
Well, I found it very peculiar that Mr. Cope's office was not represented there for this reason when we discussed this at the steering committee. I personally found that very repulsive. I assumed while we were sitting there that Mr. Cope knew and just decided not to come, but found out later after the fact that nobody even thought it was worth noting that to him so he could be there. If you had done business with somebody for 29 years and had a professional relationship with them, how would you feel if somebody railroaded you and said that your contract wasn't going to be renewed about a month away from the deadline? Has anybody met with Mr. Cope to discuss a budget this year? Has Mr. Cope made an effort to do that with you or Ms. Nolan? Has Mr. Cope made an effort to do that with you or Ms. Nolan? Did he request to speak with you? Did he request to speak with you about this, about the budget for the next year?
Don't know if he did or not. We never did have an appointment regarding the budget. I mean, it may have been scheduled, I don't.
Well, Mr. Cope seems to take exception to that. Mr. Cope, did you ask Mr. Burgess about having a meeting with him to discuss the budget?
I called Ms. Nolan about, oh, the second week, called her office about the second or third week in April, because the ordinary routine is I submit my budget with all other deadlines. It's usually in March, and I'm routinely scheduled, as all other department heads are, to meet with the mayor and the finance director to go over the budget, discuss any changes that are in the proposal, and I didn't hear anything. And I thought, well, maybe everything's just rocking along. Everything's fine. They looked at my budget, and I assumed everything was in order. But I decided about the second week of April to call over, and Ms. Nolan's office informed me, well, you need to contact the mayor, which I was a little bit surprised about that because I thought, well, we'd set up a meeting. So I contacted the mayor's office and set up a meeting for the day after the Moss trial to discuss the budget, and I got a call in the afternoon of the Moss trial and was told that the mayor was busy and would not be able to meet with me the next day. I didn't think anything about that. Quite candidly, again, I just assumed that everything was in order, had no suspicion that there was anything else going on, and assumed that my budget was in order and was acceptable, because nothing had ever been communicated to the contrary to me. So in any event, I did not end up having a meeting, and the next thing I knew, unbeknownst to me, again, I was not invited to the steering committee. I was not told about the meeting, not asked to be present, and I got a call following the steering committee meeting and said, you've been asked to be replaced by a full-time county attorney. So I was totally caught off guard by that. I was certainly surprised.
Well, in my opinion, this is just absolutely scandalous. I don't think that's how we should treat people that have done business with us this long. So I think the circumstances that are surrounding this are sketchy at best, and we need to reconsider. The fourth reason is that this is going to be a concentration of power. Historically, this body has hired the attorney that represents us. My understanding is this plan is going to be putting the county attorney's office either under the mayor or in his office, or he appoints them, and we confirm. Basically, it's going to take away our ability to elect who this person is. At a bare minimum, if we decide to go with an in-house legal office, we need to set up a committee of commissioners to do the interview process because the attorney needs to represent us and not the mayor's office. This concentration of power is one of the reasons that our founders revolted against England, and if you'll just indulge me for a minute, I've got some quotes I'd like to read from you from a book by Dr. Timothy Johnson. Throughout the centuries, a common theme in the development of civilizations is the concentration of power. When such political structures exist, power emanates from government. The founders were very intent on limiting the ever-encroaching powers of government. Government's concentration of power, if unchecked, ultimately erodes liberty. The writers at that time who used the pseudonym of Cato reminded the people at that time and us that governments by their nature tend toward aggressive oppression, expansion of power. Power must be well-defined and carefully confined because governments by nature tend to expand their power. Of course, taxation is a side effect of concentrating power. Potential oppressors who are not resisted the first time they reach for power will attempt further oppressions later. Now, I'm not saying that there's any kind of power-grabbing going on here, but this is not a new concept. This has been going on for centuries, where you try to create new bureaucracies and centralize power in one agency. It takes away power from the people if we set up this bureaucracy under the county mayor's office, and I don't think that we need to go there. If this door is open for that bureaucracy to become a county agency under the mayor's office, it's never going to go away. Who is going to vote to lay off these employees and go back to the good times, the good ways that we've had with Mr. Cope? If you allow this new department to be created, it's going to have its foot in the door. We're going to have more control, a bigger budget, and ultimately, this is going to contribute to higher property taxes as we have to continue hiring more lawyers and more staff. Increased government power and control leads to higher taxation from the people, and tonight I'm saying we need to slam the door on this big government idea and keep the county attorney out of the county's executive branch and keep it with us. And the final reason that I support keeping Mr. Cope is just basic common sense. $259,000 is less than $338,000. One in-house lawyer cannot do what seven lawyers are doing right now. It's not possible. One in-house lawyer will not be able to handle all the demands placed on him when a commissioner calls. One of the things that was discussed at the steering committee was that we wanted to have somebody there that could answer the phone. Well, every time I've called Mr. Cope's office, I've gotten either him or an associate attorney or another partner on the phone who's been able to answer my question right then. I've never had to have a call back. If we have one county attorney, is he going to be allowed to go to lunch? If we want to call and get him on the phone, he's not going to be able to be at lunch, or if he's at another meeting and we want to get him on the phone, he's not there. If he goes on vacation and you have a question, he's not there. And there again, you're going to have to have somebody to back him up. I don't think this is a good idea. That $330,000 proposal is going to quickly double or triple in size. It's just inevitable. This department's like every other government department. It's going to want more money every year. Another reason it's a great alarm is that we're hiring somebody new who has never done anything for the county, is my understanding. This is very dangerous. Mr. Cope's office reviews contracts that are hundreds of thousands of dollars routinely. They are very skilled and knowledgeable about these contracts, about all of our departments, and how the system works. If we hire somebody from the outside who's never done this before, think about the liability that puts on us. And to think that we can set up a law office by July 1 and have it up and running with somebody that's as skilled as Mr. Cope is is just absolutely naive and crazy. It cannot be done. We should have done this six months ago if we wanted to phase from Mr. Cope into an in-house department. It's just not going to work. And finally, Mr. Cope's office provides all the benefits for those employees of his and his staff. We don't have to pay for their health care. We don't have to pay for their retirement. That's all included in what he does for us. So to summarize, I have five reasons why we should not take another route. The first one is the cost savings. The second one is the competency. The third one is the concentration of power. The fourth one is the circumstances in which we arrived where we are right now, and the fifth one is just plain old common sense. The voice of the people that I hear out when I'm talking to them is that they don't want any more government offices. They don't want any more spending. They want us to rein in our spending and live within our means. Their voice should not be denied tonight by creating another county bureaucracy. So, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for, you and your members, for your time, for listening to me. I sincerely hope that each of you will support Commissioner Baum's plan. I think it's a good one. It's much better worded than what I had. I hope that each of you will cast a positive vote on this motion. It's in the best interest of our citizens and our county. Thank you.
Commissioner P.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this motion that we send this back to steering.
Second Commissioner.
All right, now, I'd like to speak about why. First of all, I don't want one or two people standing up here and telling the rest of this body what they ought to do. This needs to come through the proper procedures, and all due respect to either one of these gentlemen, I have high regard of what they say. However, you know, I was counting five, after five, there was six, and then there were seven, and then there were eight reasons, and most of them I agree with right down the line. There's no difference, there's no question of the competency of Mr. Cope and his attorney's abilities. However, there is a question about the cost, and neither one of you know what this attorney is costing us, and I've asked you to go by and check, and I don't think either one of you have. You know, you're a stickler on, you want to save some money. How much money have we spent on judgments this year? Do you know? Over a million dollars or right at a million. Do you know how much we spent last year? 1.5. What did we spend the year that you're going back and looking at this? A lot of that is attorney fees, so you're not looking at apples to apples when you're looking at $259,000 versus $300,000, and I would urge you to send this back to steering and let them sort that out. I also will point out to you that 21 commissioners voted to do this. The mayor is following the instructions of this body.
Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, I rise in not to speak about the incompetency because you are an incompetent attorney. Josh McQuarrie is a competent attorney. Roger Hudson's a competent attorney, and all others over there are competent attorneys. I agree with Commissioner P. Instead of this, I don't know if I'm for it or against it. I hadn't had time to, you know, to look at it and let it soak in. I think it does need to go back to steering. The numbers, we don't know the exact numbers. And again, this, when I'm standing here and talking about sending it back, it's not because of, I don't agree with what you said, because they are competent attorneys over there. But there's a process here. You speak of the processes a while ago. There's a process of committees, and I think we need to follow the committee process as The accusations a while ago, I don't know. I do know that 21 members of this body before the last commission voted unanimously to do exactly what the mayor brought up. That's the reason I made the motion that night, because I knew two years ago when we did the process, I knew that June 30, 2012 was coming. I knew also that two years of, to 2014, Mr. Cope's office is going to be doing the legal litigation and those things. Is that correct? You know, so I knew those things. I wouldn't blindsided with them because I knew how we voted two years ago. So I think this needs to go back. I think we need to discuss it. It could be a good idea. It could not. I don't know until I get the facts and get the, you know, the right numbers, so.
Commissioner McAdoo.
I don't mind sending it back to steering, but we've got a timeframe here. If I'm not the only one that knows that in June we set the budget, so are you telling me that we're going to send this back to steering? They're going to have it back before us, before we set the budget in June?
Commissioner Young, most to speak, I believe.
I'm kind of in agreement with Commissioner McAdoo here. Mr. Mayor, you told me at one time when I was, my first year here, you don't present something for budget or try to cut something or change something two months before budget. Well, that's what we're doing, and Mr. Baum's plan is something that's tried and true. If we want to start July 1 and looking at how we're going to do this, that's fine, because the commission did vote 21 to nothing to look at this. Bigger is not better, and I agree with my colleague, Mr. Stevens, and I want to, because I work for the city of Murfreesboro, I wanted to quote him right, so I looked on the Internet just a little while ago. They have seven staff for their legal department. One city attorney, one assistant attorney, two staff attorneys, two legal assistants, and a administrative assistant. Their cost is $764,968. They're representing 110,000 people with 113 million dollar budget. We're doing it a whole lot cheaper for what Mr. Cope and his firm's doing it for, for a $445 million budget. You're not going to hire a good attorney for what we're wanting to pay. Look at the corporate world. It doesn't work like that. We got to do something now because the budget's imminent. The school board's got us hemmed up right now. We're going to have to look at a tax increase. We're going to have to bake that next time. We need to get this solved and resolved now, and this is the cheapest way, most effective way that we can move forward. If the mayor's been tasked to do this, he needs to do it and have a plan at the beginning of the year, so we have plenty of time to look at it and debate it and whatnot, not two months before, not really a month before we get our budget done.
Speaker hasn't spoken. Commissioner Allen.
I have a question for Commissioner Baum since he drafted this. On item five, the hourly pay rate, you're saying that that line item would be deleted? So are you saying then that the services are capped at the $259,000 budget?
May I answer the question?
Yes, you may answer the question.
The system that's in place at the moment has us paying the Cope Law Firm a retainer, and then on top of that, an hourly fee for services rendered. In this proposal, I mentioned, in this resolution, I mentioned at the very beginning that I wanted to go back to the, a total cost of $259,000, which was the total cost in the 2009, 2010 budget year. That compensation scheme at that time was different. There wasn't a retainer and an hourly rate. Instead, there was just a flat fee. That's why this resolution can state, the resolution is for a total cost of $259,000. That's the bottom-line cost. There's not an hourly fee that would exceed that cost. It's just a flat fee, and the flat fee was present in 2009, 2010. So the resolution in item five that you just referenced is designed to go back to the old compensation scheme from 2009, 2010. In order to do that, we have to delete the provision that pays the Cope Law Firm an hourly fee on top of their retainer. Once that's deleted, then the $259,000 total cost can be a bottom-line figure because there's not an hourly fee built into it.
Have you had an opportunity to review this with the Cope Law Firm? I'm just curious to know if this is the first time Mr. Cope's seen it.
No, this is kind of an unusual situation, but since Mr. Cope is here, he might, could indicate whether this would be agreeable to him or not. I believe it is, but I don't know that.
Yes, we would be willing to work with this, and yes, Mr. Baum presented this. He discussed it the other night at budget and conferred with me, and I took it up with the other attorneys in the firm, and we said that this would be acceptable to the county. We would certainly agree to do this for the general legal services that we provided. I made clear to Mr. Baum and I made clear hopefully the other night in budget, we want to be of service to the county. This is not about us. This is about what's in the best interest of the county. If you want us to continue to provide the services and do so at hopefully a cost-effective basis, we're glad to do that. If you prefer to go another direction, we understand that. We leave this in your hands. It's your decision to make the right decision, and we offer our services if we can be of benefit to you, but again, if you prefer going another direction, we understand that. Whatever you decide certainly will be acceptable to us.
Could I provide a second-part answer to your question, which may also address what Commissioner P. was raising? There are litigation costs that are independent of this decision, and by that I mean the litigation costs that we will incur next year will be incurred whether we hire an in-house county attorney for the budgeted $338,000 that we discussed on Tuesday night, or whether we re-contract with the Cope Law Firm for $259,000, as is in this resolution. These litigation fees are independent of this decision because they're going to have to be paid, again, whether we hire an in-house attorney or re-contract with the Copes for general legal services, but there are those litigation costs.
I've had the opportunity to work with your office since 2005 on planning. I think you're a bargain at any price.
Thank you.
We've got Commissioner P. and both Commissioner Farley that want to speak. Go ahead, Commissioner P.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Cope's, Mr. Cope's firm is under contract with us for another four years to do our litigation. Is that not correct? Or maybe, am I looking at that wrong?
Litigation piece continues through, litigation piece of the contract, which is the second piece, the extended term, that goes through 2014. It is renewed for four-year terms unless you give 180-day notice that you choose not to pursue that in the next four years.
Exactly. And one other thing I want to point out, everybody's saying we don't have time to have steering meet before budget and maybe not under regular hours, but if I'm not mistaken, budget's going to meet another five or six times before we meet in, at the end of June. I don't see any reason for something this important, we need to make a snap decision right now, tonight. Let's let steering look at this. Let's let them have a special meeting. Let's let them look at it and come back to us. They can do that job between now and have us, give us time to review this instead of making a snap decision right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Farley. And then, excuse me, Commissioner Coggan hasn't spoken, and he wishes to speak.
Part of what Commissioner P. just spoke of was what I was going to bring up, but if we didn't have a special meeting, is there something in the language of the agreement we got that we could continue on until there was 120 days' notice or something? Is that correct?
No notice required here, but you can continue the agreement with, agreement between the commission and the the commission and Mr. Cope's firm.
So...
Just as is, without any change, if you so chose.
You act like you wanted to say something. I didn't know you...
All I just, I, all I know is I have an agreement through June 30. That's the only agreement I have right now. I'm happy to, I'm happy to consider anything the commission wants to do, but I don't wanna presuppose what may happen. So, we're open, again, to discussing and doing whatever the county prefers and wants to do, and we're happy to do that. But there is no agreement beyond June 30. That's all I wanna make clear.
I, I, I think this is important, um, very important, that we don't, that we need to make the right decision, just as Mr. Cope said a while ago, and I think we need to, steering needs to have a special call meeting to look at this. That way, we can send it to one of the Budget's, um, meetings. But we need to have it before the, the June 29th meeting.
Uh, lis- listen, Commissioner Coggan.
I guess, right now, we currently have a motion and a second on the floor to send this back to steering, so I just wanna address that motion that's on the floor, and I guess that's where we need to kinda focus our discussion and comments there, and then vote on that motion before we start getting into details about the agreement, whether or not we're even gonna send it back to steering. So, I just wanna address that, and then I'll address the legal services, or the Commissioner Baum's proposal, um, in just a minute after this vote. But, uh, we do have a committee process, and it's a great process, and it's one that in an ideal place and time, it, it works really, really well. Um, but I believe in this instance, it's not wise or prudent to try to take it back to steering, and the reason being is, our next steering meeting is scheduled for June 4th, which means whatever recommendation the steering committee comes up with out of that meeting wouldn't be brought forth to this body until June 14th. And then, if that is voted up and approved to continue legal services, uh, routine services, general services with the current county attorney, then we're fine. But if it's voted down, then we have essentially till June 30th to put an in-house legal department together. So, uh, that's why I would urge you to vote no to this. Let's hash this out. I mean, it's pretty cut and dry for that line item for the budget of $259,000, but as far as sending it back, I don't know that we have time to send it back.
I will make one comment, that the steering committee discussed this at the last meeting, and they were simply asked to affirm or deny the direction that had already been set two years ago, and they voted six to one to move toward the direction of, uh, creating an in-house attorney for Rutherford County. So, that's, I did, that was asked, that was discussed. Mr. Cope was not there, I grant you that. Uh, I did that before we even prepared a budget to give to Budget. Just, it was no need to prepare a budget unless, unless the steering committee reaffirmed the direction that had been set two years ago. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That vote would have been five to two. Uh, I think Commissioner Sandlin called for the question, and the chairman asked Ms. Shelton, do we need to vote on that? I thought we were voting on the call for the question. I had serious reservations about this, as evidenced from my questions. If you go back and watch the video, I was very concerned that this was something that was not practical or even possible, and I was about to ask another question, and I got cut off, and I didn't get to finish what I was going to say. But the question here is, are we happy with the services that we're getting or not? And for those who want to get an in-house legal department, what do you not like? The effectiveness or the efficiency? The professionalism or the promptness?
All right, Mr. Stevens, could we just...
There's no reason to delay.
Can we stay on the amendment, uh, and discuss that, and then we can discuss the merits? Uh, I need to ask, first of all, our county attorney for a little interpretation here. Mr. Cope, we have this amendment, and I, uh, it's really not an amendment to the actual motion, but it's, uh, something to defer the action on this, and I guess, is the amendment basically to say we're putting this aside and sending it back to, uh, we're not amending any, any text in here. Is the amendment motion appropriate?
Well, you can, uh, under the county rules and commissions, you can defer something for two months, up to two months, and recall it. But yes, if you choose to send it back to another committee, you could, it's an amendment, it's in order to send it to a committee. I mean, you, you have a right to amend, to send it back somewhere else if you choose to do that.
Not actually amending it, I guess that's a technical term. We're just deciding, we're not choosing to act on this at this point. That's what the amendment is saying.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, I'm trying to give you the benefit of the doubt on that. I mean, I, technically, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna say anything other than, if you choose to send it back to steering, that's been done before, and so I'm not gonna rule...
Think that's appropriate, uh...
I, I don't think it's appropriate, but that's personal opinion. But, but, so, you, you, that's one thing I'll state, is it's not appropriate. I'm gonna stay, I've, I've man of character and integrity, try to be, and I, that's what's in that book, and if you wanna send it back to steering, you can send it back to steering.
I just wanna be sure that's okay.
Absolutely. You have the right to do that, absolutely.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan.
I almost made it through a meeting without standing up and saying anything. My wife would've been proud of me, but, uh, this passed steering, five to two, six to one, however, and it passed Budget four to three. But I don't think there are 11 commissioners in this room support doing this. So, we can go back through the committee process, and we're gonna end up right back here stumbling over this all over again in a month's time. I ask this to come from Budget, and we'd see if there were 11 commissioners that were ready to do this or not, 'cause that's what it boils down to, whether there's four on those two committees or not. It's gonna take 11 people in this room to vote to change this, and why don't we get that vote out of the way tonight and decide where we're going? I mean, that'll give the Budget Committee time to, to do what has to be done, and start advertising for the attorney, and deciding if there's gonna be a committee, and all that stuff. We're on a very short timeline, anyway. I think this has been a little rushed. I, I, I may have been, have a lack of memory, but I thought we were gonna rehash this again in two years, instead of just hire an in-house attorney. That's my mistake. But I remember, I voted for the legal service agreement two years ago, but I thought it was gonna be rehashed. That's, that's bad on me. But I think we settle this right now, and know where we're going, or gonna be right back here after a couple of committee meetings, seeing if there's 11 people in this room that support this or not, 'cause that's what it all boils down to. It takes 11 commissioners, not four on those two committees. So, I, no offense to Commissioner P., but I'd say, let's vote down this thing to defer it, and then, and make a decision, and know where we're going.
Commissioner P.
I'm not used to bumping elbows with Will. He does a good job of, uh, speaking, and, and I think everything that he said is true there. Uh, and one of the things that he said is, that it takes 11 people to do this. It doesn't take two that are gonna come up and surprise us with legislation that has not been through the committee. I'm asking this to go through the committee, it can come right back to us, but, well, instead of just two people looking at it, let's let a committee look at it. Thank you.
Questions or discussion?
I know it's been a long night, but if it goes through the process on June 14th, I could vote for this on June 14th. I don't know if it's good or not, but I haven't had a chance to look at it, to know if it's worth ver- voting for or not. You know, you're an intelligent man. You, you know numbers, and, and I respect you, but I don't know until I sit down and, and let it go through my simple mind, you know, until I get encrusted numbers myself. So, I don't know if it's a good idea or not, until I sit down and go through the process and look at it. I could be up here June 14th, ready to vote for this, or I could not, I don't know. I'd just like to sit, go back through the process, instead of just, boom, right here. We've had a long night tonight. We've had a lot of discussion up here, and I'd like to have time to, to, to look at it and think it over, before I make a decision. Nothing against the Cope office, it is, I wanna make sure that the numbers match up to what you're saying.
One wish to speak that hasn't spoken, and then we... Commissioner Stevens.
Again, I would just like to say, there is no reason to delay this a month if we're happy with the services, and, Mr. Chairman, I call for the question, and I urge you all to vote no on the amendment.
Phillips? He'd like to, uh, he's called for the question. Is there, do we...
I'll have to hold the button on the question.
All in favor of, of the call for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, I meant, I, I didn't ask for the noes yet. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Sarah's gonna say the noes have it on that. I mean, I can call for electronic vote, but it sounded louder. And now, Commissioner Stevens. I mean, not Stevens, Commissioner Phillips wanted to speak.
Thank you. I, I can't remember how long ago this really happened. Someone said two years ago, but I remember maybe even four years ago, uh, or longer, when this discussion started, and it started actually by looking at the agreement that we had with the county attorney's office that dated to 1957, if I remember right, with certain monies set aside, and we weren't adhering to that agreement. We weren't. So, we looked at that agreement and started putting together a new agreement. From that, we started a discussion, would it be more inexpensive and better use of taxpayers' dollars to have an in-house attorney hired by the county? A committee was put together. They made a report. Anybody looked at that report? And what came out of that report was that we would save, I think, in excess of $100,000 a year over what we were paying now by doing an in-house department. So, it was to save money, and it was substantial money of $100,000 a year plus. And I could be wrong about that, but that's what's in my mind, and my mind is not exactly as sharp as it used to be, and I apologize for that. But there was a committee put together, and they studied this longer than a year. And here we are, making a decision tonight, that this commission studied for a number of months, and that committee came back with the recommendation through the steering committee. The steering committee looked at it for several months before they brought it to the, uh, to the, this committee. I think there was even a timeline put together, and that's what we're talking about right now, is that timeline. So, I don't know why it should be a surprise to Mr. Cope's office. Maybe because we haven't talked about it in months and months and months and months. Maybe that's why it is, and I can understand that. But what I remember is that there was a committee put together, looking at what we were paying the county attorney's office, and what budget we could put together compared to looking at other counties and what they were paying, and we could save us a substantial amount of money. Now, what someone has said, at least two attorneys have, have said tonight, is that we're going to cost the county taxpayers money, when two other attorneys that were on that committee came back and said, "We're gonna save $100,000 a year by doing this." And this is the timeline that we put together, working with Mr. Cope's office. So, all of those things were in, in place, and I know there's a number of new commissioners that are here, don't remember all of that, 'cause we probably haven't talked about it nearly as much as we should have. But I have an issue with this commission working months and months and months and months to put this thing in process, and then all of a sudden, tonight, we're not gonna do it, when there has been recommendations to do it. I'd like to look at it a little bit further. And if Mr. Cope, what's the magic in doing it by, by, uh, June 30th, or July 1st, or January 1st? Uh, Mr. Cope has been going on and on and on for the, I, I think, the last four years with this process. There's a whole group of citizens, concerned citizens, that also studied that project for months. Their initial reaction, from what I remember, was unfavorable, and as they looked at the project, and looked at other, uh, counties and what they were doing, their report came back favorable, that we could also better serve the citizens of the county and save taxpayers' money by going to our own in-house department. That's what I remember. And this process tonight concerns me a little bit, simply because what we're doing is saying, well, it's gonna cost us $80,000. From what we've been told before, we're gonna save $100,000. So, so who are we gonna believe? And why are we making this decision tonight, when we've got something we can go back and take a, and reexamine and take a look at, and say, is that really, really true? Is that true? So, I, I, I don't, I don't care anything about the, the June 30th deadline. We've been working year to year with Mr. Cope, or month to month with Mr. Cope and his folks, and I'm also here to say that I think they've done a wonderful job, and I wouldn't have any problem in continuing the services with, that they had. I think, as far as I can remember, there were several, maybe not several, but a couple of employees in Mr. Cope's office that are considered county employees and are on county benefits. I don't know if that still exists or not. Has that been done away with, Jim?
There's one now that's over here.
Okay, but, but they're, they're being paid some benefits, county benefits. So, there are things that have been said tonight that are not exactly, exactly what this body in the past has asked us to do, and I can't remember that timeline. Maybe Mayor Burgess, you can, but whatever that timeline was, called for a coordination of efforts between Mr. Cope's office and the new office for a number of months, and we were gonna pay his office for those number of months for that transition period. So, there are a lot of things that we've not discussed tonight that have been discussed prior. If we wanna take, if we wanna take the commissioners' word that we're going to save $80,000, I, I don't have any problem with that. I really don't, if that's what we're going to do, by saving that money. But I also have reports from two other commissioners, who were also attorneys, and they also worked in Mr. Cope's office, that said, "We're gonna save $100,000 bucks." So, so where do we go? And, and I just don't think we ought to be making a decision tonight overturning, in my mind, four years of work to put this thing in place. So, I'd like to send it back. I would. I'd like, and I'd like for Mayor Burgess to have the opportunity to go through this, with the steering committee, and also be able to report why we, why we started this to start with. I don't think it was to create more bureaucracy. What I think it was for, was to create efficiency, and also create an opportunity to better serve the citizens of the county in a more efficient way. That's what I remember, and I think it was, I, I don't even know if it was unanimous, I really don't, but I remember it being overwhelmingly voted to do this. Now, I understand, Commissioner Stevens never speaks, I don't think, unless he has his facts together, and I believe he does, okay? But I'm telling you, the other report that I heard was, we're going to save a lot of money, more than $80,000, which was $100,000 bucks. So, why, why should we make a decision right now, tonight, you guys, that could end up costing us money, even though I know these two guys have put a tremendous, these two commissioners have put a tremendous amount of effort into this, and it's probably, uh, probably gonna work out just exactly like they said, 'cause times have changed. I know they have. I know they have. But I, I'm not willing to sit here and say, "I'm gonna vote for this proposal," when I'm thinking in the back of my mind, the committee that spent months and months and months, and gave regular feedback to the steering committee, said that it's the thing to do, and we're gonna save money by doing it. So, I would suggest that we send it back.
Other discussion? Call for the question. Second by, who was that? Commissioner Schaefer? All in favor of calling for the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the record reflect that we're going to vote on the amendment, and the amendment made in properly second simply says that the motion that was presented by Commissioner Baum is to be sent back to the steering committee for their review and discussion and recommendation. Is that basically the way you understand the motion? So, if you're voting yes on this amendment, you're sending this motion with a revised legal services agreement back to steering for further review. That being the case, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eleven yes, nine noes. Motion passes.
Amendment has passed, and the steering committee is charged with having a meeting as, I guess, as soon as possible. I don't know when the next meeting is without looking, but I think you're encouraged to have this through the steering and back to this body before the next commission meeting. Is that more or less correct? Should we do anything different from that? Seriously, am I missing anything I'm asking, honestly? Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. McAdoo. Yes, sir.
Well, since we're sending it back to steering, and this is just for me personally, I would like to see all commissioners that are concerned about this to attend that steering committee meeting and voice your opinion, ask questions, have, put in input and so on and so forth, because we do have a tight deadline. I don't want to see it prolonged, that I got to come up here June 30th and try to vote on a legal budget, and I'm just getting it June 29th. So all questions and concerns or whatever you have, and I'm pretty sure the chairman will recognize you, that we attend this steering committee meeting.
Mr. McAdoo. Commissioner Jordan?
I wonder how this is going to work. Our next commission meeting is June 14th. If this proposal goes away, the new attorney is supposed to start July 1st. That gives you two weeks after that meeting to advertise, hire, and he's gone, you know, in two weeks after that meeting. But I just hope everybody knows how, the spot we just, corner we just painted ourselves into. But, you know, if this proposal gets through steering and is approved by the commission next month, we're fine. But if it doesn't, then we're up a creek without a paddle.
All of you have spoken to the integrity and professionalism of Mr. Cope and his firm. I'm sure he'd be more than happy to extend this a month, two months, or a year, whatever you will choose to do. I think he's, you can work with him on that. But anyway.
I can't comment on what a crystal ball holds, and it's a mighty cloudy crystal ball right now. So you tell me how this goes down, and I'll tell you what we'll do. So we'll say, I'm making a joke, but I, you know, again, I don't know. Our contract runs out June 30th. That's all I can say at this point. I've not been consulted about it, so I can't say what the future holds. It is a cloudy crystal ball.
Commissioner Cook?
Mr. Cope, was it four years ago that we did this, about renewing your contract, and it wasn't right, and we corrected it?
Commissioner Cook, I'm not sure about that in terms of the timeframe. It was probably within the 2009 timeframe when it actually came on. I think that's when the Private Act got amended, Mayor, wasn't it?
I don't think it was.
It's three to four years ago, I think.
I don't think it was two years ago.
No, it's been three or four years, I think.
Commissioner Cook, there was not an agreement previous to this agreement that we had in writing. There was not an agreement with a legal services agreement.
That's what I'm thinking. It went on until-
Private Act dated 1957, which did not outline any terms. It said he was paid $3,600, and that was before his time. That was- '09 and '10 is when we actually got this put in place. I mean- We had, that's order here, please. We-
I was just thinking about going back. I think I have paperwork back that far, four or five, maybe six years ago, and I was wanting to go back and look up and see what I could find on it.
This discussion started in 2007. We didn't finalize it until 2010. We had to get the Private Act changed first before we could execute this agreement. The minutes of all those meetings starting in 2007 are there included. We will have a special meeting of steering and/or the board of commissioners as required. All right, that being said, that's the action you've taken. If someone else wishes to submit some other action regarding that issue, we're going to move on to the next agenda item. And the next agenda item is an executive session with the county attorney regarding EEOC charge number 494-2012-01228. That being said, everyone that's not a member of the commission and the county attorney and myself will be asked to be excused from the meeting. We will have the executive session, and then we will come back into session for a report from the county attorney on the executive session. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session, and we've been in an executive session with our county attorney, and he's going to report on that executive session to us now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've had a meeting to simply provide information to the commission regarding EEOC charge number 494-2012-01228. I have provided information to the commissioners concerning that charge and have answered some questions, and there's been no deliberation other than the providing of legal information. There've been no discussions among the commissioners with regard to any actions to be taken or not taken, as the case may be. I do have a resolution that we've prepared for consideration by the commission, and I believe Commissioner Coggan is prepared to present that.
Coggan?
Chairman, a resolution on employment of legal services for defense of EEOC claim number 494-2012-01228, whereas an EEOC charge has been filed against the Rutherford County Assessor of Property styled Kathy Dum, the Rutherford County Property Assessor, and given charge number 494-2012-01228. And whereas this matter is pending before the EEOC, and whereas the county has an occasion, on occasion utilized attorney Randy Mantooth of the law firm Leitner Williams Dooley and Napolitan, P L L C, to represent county officials on certain matters, and whereas Mr. Mantooth's services are offered to the county at the same hourly rate as that provided for by the county attorney's office, and whereas it is appropriate to employ attorney Randy Mantooth in the above-styled EEOC charge and such further future charges and/or suits as may be made against the above-named public official and/or his office arising out of this charge, as the county mayor and county attorney shall determine at the same hourly rate as currently provided for in the legal services agreement with the county attorney. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the Rutherford County Commission, upon recommendation of the county mayor and with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney, agrees that EEOC charge number 494-2012-01228 be assigned for defense attorney to, for defense to attorney Randy Mantooth of the law firm of Leitner Williams Dooley and Napolitan, P L L C, at the hourly rate of $150 per hour. The other charges and/or suits that may be levied against the above-mentioned public official and/or his office may in the future be assigned to attorney Randy Mantooth at the law firm of Leitner Williams Dooley and Napolitan, P L L C, at the hourly rate of $150 per hour, upon recommendation of the county mayor and with the advice, approval, and consent of the county attorney. That upon future charge being made, assigned to Randy Mantooth of the law firm of Leitner Williams Dooley and Napolitan, P L L C, a report be made to the county commission advising of the said charge. Upon resolution of the case on behalf of the county, Mr. Mantooth be directed to vigorously pursue collection of legal fees from the charging party, as legally authorized by law to do so, and that Mr. Mantooth use discretion to determine the economic feasibility of pursuing such option. Resolved this 17th day of May, 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of this, please say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Coggan wishes to speak.
I just want to, don't have a date yet, but I think that we need to try and hold a special called steering meeting, maybe as early as next week and possibly, or possibly the next week. So I'd like to try and get with the steering committee members and look at your calendars, and then get with Ms. Taylor and let her send out an email confirming that, and then she'll also send out the proper public notice for that meeting to discuss the, before, earlier agenda item regarding the legal services agreement.
Any other business anyone has? There being no other business, thank you very much. We are adjourned.